Okay. It is now six thirty-one. And I'd like to call to order the Malibu City Council Regular Meeting of November the fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting is being held by teleconference due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, and we appreciate everyone's patience as we navigate this Zoom meeting process. Council members and city staff are participating from remote locations, and all votes will be taken by roll call. Members of the public can participate in the meeting or watch it by going to malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. At this screen, you can click on the tab to either just watch the meeting or to sign up to speak on the particular items. Those who wish to speak during the meeting should follow the instructions at malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting. Please make sure you visit malibu city dot org forward slash virtual meeting early to sign up to speak and download the Zoom application. The city clerk will call on those who have signed up to speak when the item is called, so you must be present in the Zoom meeting to be recognized. Council members, if you have comments to make during the meeting, please raise your hand, and I will call on you in turn so that we can make our discussion clear for the record and the public. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Fair?
Here.
Councilmember Pearson?
Present.
Councilmember Yuri?
Here.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Here.
Mayor Grisanti?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Great. I hope you'll join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a an approval of the agenda?
Um, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll say.
We have a motion in a second to approve the agenda.
I I have something to add, please. I'd like to adjourn in memory of Eileen Ryan, Brett Bearish, Andrea Bulo and his son Marco. All local residents and business owners.
Some very tough two weeks.
Yeah.
Okay. All right. Can I get the first two names again, please?
Eileen Ryan.
Uh huh.
Brett Bearish.
Okay.
Andrea Bulo.
I already have Andrea and Marco. Okay. Okay. Having made that change, can we have a roll call vote to approve the agenda?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yuri?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
May I have a report on the posting of the agenda?
The agenda for this meeting was properly posted on November fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Very first item on our agenda is a ceremonial presentation. Proclamation declaring November thirteenth through the twentieth as United Against Hate Week. And I'm going to be reading this. Uh, the original has already been sent to the organization. Whereas the United States is a nation of immigrants whose strength comes from its diversity. And whereas the Constitution enshrines equality on all individuals regardless of race, gender, orientation, religion, or political views, and whereas there is an ongoing escalation of hate speech that encourages the propagation of racist, xenophobic, anti-Semitic, sexist, homophobic, Islamophobic, and other bigoted views by emboldened hate groups and individuals, and whereas deep divisions within our country are the resist, the result of extreme ideology, further strengthening a cycle of mistrust and suspicion fueled by fear, anxiety, and insecurity. The number of hate crimes across the United States has increased dramatically over the past six years. Whereas the city of Malibu is dedicated to preventing and opposing hate and intolerance in our communities, the city council endorses a resolution in support of L A versus Hate United Against Hate Week two thousand and twenty-two and city activities to stop hate intolerance and bullying and promote safe, inclusive, and equitable neighborhoods, and whereas education, compassion, and cooperation are key to unlocking, understanding, and embracing differences between people. And whereas we seek to join other communities in California and cities across this country in this third annual L A against hate, United Against Hate Week as an important step in bridging divisions and strengthening our communities. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Malibu hereby declares its enthusiastic support of L A versus Hate, United Against Hate Week in Malibu, November thirteenth through the twentieth, two thousand and twenty-two, and each day beyond. Presented this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-two. Okay. And that will now bring us to the second proclamation.
Mayor, did you want to hear from Fabiana with United Against Hate before you move on to the second proclamation?
Is Fabiana available?
We do. We have her here, and she's unmuted.
Thank you.
Hello, everyone. Thank you so much for having me in this meeting and for having been willing to issue a proclamation for United Against Hate Week. I have just a few words that I'd like to share on behalf of L A versus Hate. Um, so good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Fabiana. I am here tonight representing the L A versus Hate program. L A versus Hate is a program of the L A County Commission of Human Relations. The commission is one of the oldest civil rights agencies in the country devoted to promoting positive human relations and our richly diverse multicultural county. The L A versus Hate campaign inspires people to stand up to hate by expressing solidarity and by reporting hate through two-one-one L A. The campaign helps victims of hate receive needed interventions through a team of care professionals. For the third year, L A versus Hate is hosting United Against Hate Week, a week of community-first strategies to engage residents. We offer art interventions, community events, digital resources, and creative opportunities to stand against hate. The goal is to promote respect and inclusion during the week. We ask everyone to promote L A versus Hate, United Against Hate Week with our artwork and businesses, homes, schools, and digital platforms, and by holding events that inspire inclusivity and collaboration. Your city residents can get sources and toolkits to get involved at laverseshate.org slash United Against Hate Week. We thank the city of Malibu for joining us in celebrating and participating in this important week, which promotes solidarity and welcome for everyone. Thank you again.
Thank you, Fabiana. Okay. That brings us to item one B, which is a presentation declaring November two thousand and twenty-two as Family Court Awareness Month. Whereas in two thousand and seventeen, PQ a five-year-old was suffocated by his biological father during an approved court visit despite his father's history of abusive behavior, and his mother, Anna Estvez, is pleased to the court to protect him, and whereas to honor PQ, all of the California children who have been murdered by divorcing or separated parent and the conservatively estimated fifty-eight thousand U S children per year that are court-ordered into unsupervised visitation with an abusive parent. And whereas the mission of the Family Court Awareness Month Committee, F C A M C, is to increase awareness of the importance of empirically based education and training on domestic violence and child abuse, and the importance of using scientifically valid, evidence-based treatment programs and services that are proven in terms of safety, effectiveness, and therapeutic value, and whereas the mission at the F C A M C is to educate judges and other family court professionals on evidence-based, peer-reviewed research. This research includes the Adverse Childhood Experiences Study with co-principal investigator Vincent Valetti, Kaiser Permanente dot C D C, Child Custody Evaluators' Beliefs About Domestic Abuse Allegations, Principal Investigator Daniel Saunders, University of Michigan, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice, and Child Custody Outcomes in Cases Involving Parental Alienation and Abuse Allegations, Principal Investigator Joan S. Meyer, G W Law School, sponsored by the National Institute of Justice. Such research is a critical component to making decisions that are truly in the best interest of children. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council for the city of Malibu hereby declares the month of November two thousand and twenty-two as Family Court Awareness Month in Malibu and encourages all residents to support their local community's efforts to prevent the harm of children in the hands of family members and to honor and value the lives of children. Presented this fourteenth day of November, two thousand and twenty-two. Do we have a representative of the agency?
Yes, we have Sandy Ross here, and we're asking her to unmute.
Sandy, you are unmuted.
Okay, hi. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, city council. I should have provided phonetic spelling. The child's name is Peaky.
I'm so sorry.
No, that's that's my fault. I should have sent those the spelling, the correct pronunciation. But I do thank you, and I thank the city of Malibu for joining. Right now, we're over one hundred and fifteen local governments in the state of California who are proclaiming November as Family Court Awareness Month. And my name is Sandy Ross, and I come to you today as a child safety advocate, bringing awareness on serious child safety issues that are happening in our court system. I also come to you as a survivor of domestic violence and as a protective parent of a child survivor. The primary focus of this year's Family Court Awareness Month is education. Child protection is often viewed as the job of social services, but family courts are ruling on these cases every single day. Most would be shocked that in many states, including California, family court judges who make rulings that impact children's lives have little to no mandated training in child trauma, child emotional, physical, and sexual abuse, as well as course of control and domestic violence. And I'll just give you a couple of quick statistics. Um, since last November, Family Court Awareness Month, ten California children have been murdered in the context of these cases, according to the Center for Judicial Excellence. One in fifteen children are victims of child abuse, usually by a family member or parent. Um, more than fifty percent of the time when an allegation of child sexual abuse is raised, the courts are switching physical custody to the alleged abuser. And that's out of a study out of George Washington University, peer-reviewed study. Um, so domestic violence is about power, control, power, and control, and the desire to maintain power and control doesn't just mysteriously end when the relationship ends. If there's a child involved, it ends up in the family court system, and that becomes a highly effective platform for abuse. And if judges aren't trained on these issues, they it's hard to get it right. So our primary goal this year is just to shine a spotlight on the need for mandated training for judges and other family court professionals that are ruling on these cases every day. And again, I want to thank the city for helping us prioritize child safety in our court system. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sandra. Yeah. That brings us to item number two A, communications from the public concerning matters which are not on the agenda but for which the city council has subject matter jurisdiction. Do we have any speakers?
Yes, you have five speakers for this item. They are Lonnie Gordon, Jonathan K., Craig Hill, Deborah Frankel, and Mary Ann Riggins. We'll hear from Lonnie Gordon first.
Thank you. Lonnie, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, good evening, everyone. This is for the city council and for every person who's listening, something I just happened to see on the back of my Southern California Edison bill. And I'm speaking about a telecom-related issue, but um, this is totally different than what I usually talk about. First, think of all the wooden telephone poles in our city, of which Escha is a large part. And then listen to this notice that was on the back of my current S C E bill, and I'm going to quote it. Wooden utility poles. S C E uses wooden utility poles that have been treated with chemical preservatives. These chemicals include pentachlorophenol, which is known to the state of California to cause cancer, and petroleum products such as diesel fuel, which contain chemicals including toluene and benzene that are known to the state of California to cause cancer and birth defects or other reproductive harm. If you come into contact with a wooden utility pole or the dust, debris, soil surrounding the pole, or water runoff that may contain dust, debris, and soil previously in contact with the pole, you could be exposed to these chemicals. Avoid contact with wooden utility poles and the dust, debris, soil surrounding the poles or water runoff that may contain dust, debris, soil surrounding the poles or water runoff, and we just had rain, that may contain dust, debris, and soil previously in contact with the poles. This is really kind of a frightening thing. Think of all the dogs that sniff around telephone poles. Next is their diesel generation, which you know, in January of this year, um, we were the state mandated that we have generators to um, for every S C E pole or telecom unit that's out there. So S C E uses diesel-fueled emergency generators during emergencies and other times to help minimize the interruption of our customer service and supply of electricity. The generators are used at some of the S C E facilities like substation and service centers and at location where repairs are made to the electrical system, but now also they're added on to the general system. S C E also uses diesel as the primary fuel for electricity generation on Catalina Island, which doesn't affect us, but in many service vehicles used throughout our service territory. Diesel engines produce exhaust as a byproduct of the combustion of diesel fuel. Breathing diesel engine exhaust exposes you to chemicals known to the state of California that cause cancer and birth defects and other reproductive harm. You should avoid breathing diesel fumes whenever possible.
Lonnie, that's your time.
Thank you, Lonnie.
Our next speaker is Jonathan K., followed by Craig Hill, Deborah Frankel, and Mary Ann Riggins.
Mister K., are you available?
We don't have a Jonathan K. in the meeting, but we're asking the Jonathan. We do have to unmute, and he's not responding. So we can try to circle back to him and see if he's available later, and next we can hear from Craig Hill.
Hi, Craig. Are you available?
Yeah, here I am. Hi. Good evening, everybody, council staff. Um, three quick news tidbits, all from the same location uh, on the highway down below my house just west of Moon Shadows. Um, there was a water main leak there today. I went down and checked it out and talked with the foreman and got some some info about it. What they're reporting now on next door is that um, they expect to have one or two lanes of eastbound traffic closed for the next until Thursday. Um, so there'll be a bit of a bottleneck there. It may or may not have affected the M R C's work there. Um, I guess that's news snippet number two. The M R C still hasn't um, updated the signage there. Originally, there was a condition of the approval there that they put some warning signage because of the couple of drowning deaths that have occurred there. They did put the signage up for about a year roughly, and then once they finished their nice new fence there, they took the signage down and put something else that's more like, welcome to the beach, even though there is no beach. Um, so I'm I'm still not sure about the signage, and by the way, we've always called the place Figment Cove, and for some reason, M R C has decided to call it Maritime Rocks, which ironically might be uh, enough of an alert to some people that it's a dangerous place. But anyway, point number uh, news tidbit number three. Um, while down there, I talked to a very informed resident. There are about forty-some of those double-unit houses along the beach there, mainly west of Moon Shadows. And of those forty-some, four are now owned by Picasso. Picasso. Uh, and that they send out an email news blast to the locals there. It's also a solicitation, and that they expect to own more of them in the coming year so that within a year or so, about twenty percent of that section west of uh, Moon Shadows will be owned by Picasso if they're on track. So I guess the question on that would be, you know, what are we, the city, doing about that yet? And uh, again, I may have more information about the the water main thing. If you have any questions about it, you can call me. I won't be in the meeting here now tonight because I have another Zoom meeting I have to duck into right now, so. Uh, but do feel free to call me. Thanks. See you, guys.
Thank you, Craig.
Our next speaker is Deborah Frankel, followed by Mary Ann Riggins.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can hear you, Deborah.
Fantastic. Hi, everybody. Um, first of all, I wanted to thank Sandra Ross for your concern for the families and the training for the judges. That's just that blew me away. That's wonderful. And I wanted to thank Karen and Mikey for all of your time and service you've spent on the city council. So um, I'm grateful. Um, what I'm calling about is the M R C A purchase um, that's on the agenda later, but I don't have time to be there then. And I'm just saying, I just wanted to say you might want to consider not writing a letter so fast because of the history of Joe and the M R C A and the harm they've done to so many people in the community. I'd be very careful about any purchases he makes, and you know, State Parks does tends to do a much better job. So I just wanted to make a comment. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Riggins, and we'll see if we can circle back to Jonathan K.
Mary Ann, are you available?
I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Um, so I just wanted to ask a question either for possibly the planning director or Trevor, if they could comment. Has M R C A submitted a coastal development permit for their proposed development at Bluffs Park or Ramirez Canyon? Um, is that their intention, or have we received anything yet? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
And Mayor, I'm asking the only Jonathan we have in the meeting to unmute. But it does not appear he is responding, and we don't have anyone under the last name K., so that concludes public comment.
Thank you very much. That brings us to item number two B, which is Commission Committee City Manager Updates. Do we have any commission or committee updates?
No, you don't have any commission or committee update tonight.
Okay. City Manager McClary, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mister Mayor, members of council. I'll have to give you my report. Uh, last week, I attended a meeting of the uh, Pacific Coast Highway Task Force. This was their quarterly meeting. And uh, among items on the agenda for discussion, we heard a number of updates on what they're doing to try to enhance uh, traffic safety and pedestrian safety uh, on on P C H. Uh, also wanted to note that we did hear some updates um, from Caltrans on some of the key projects that are coming up, uh, including the work going on with the Tranqus Bridge. Uh, as I think I had reported earlier, they did run into some issues with uh, getting their piles into the soil. They ran into some issues with the soil there. Uh, and so they were able to get uh, an extension on their permit to be able to continue their work through the end of December of this year. Uh, so they expect that will give them the necessary time to uh, finish up phase one and wrap that up by the end of this year. Also heard from Caltrans uh, regarding uh, the long-awaited improvements for the Lost Flores intersection. Uh, Caltrans is expecting that project to begin uh, work in late spring and early summer of next year, and they expect that project to take about six months. Also, last week, I had the uh, the fortune of getting a sneak peek tour of the new Santa Monica, Santa Monica College campus uh, right here in Malibu. Uh, and I got to take a look inside the uh, the classrooms, number of classrooms, uh, the common areas there, uh, as well as, of course, the new police station that is part of that facility. Uh, and also, uh, there is a a room that uh, joins the 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 college side and the police building, uh, which is a multipurpose room, which will also be able to function as the city's emergency operations center. So I got a chance to take a look at that. I was also very excited to uh, see the uh, auditorium that they have upstairs, which appears to be able to seat between seventy to eighty persons. I didn't get a chance to uh, hear the sound system or or see the audiovisual equipment, but uh, it looked very uh, modern and looked very promising. Uh, and in my discussions with the college officials, they noted that they were uh, very eager to uh, invite the public to be able to use that space going forward. Uh, really a beautiful building, and it's nice to see that it's coming together. Uh, they will be announcing a date for a more formal tour, uh, which the city council will be invited to uh, in the next couple of months. So I'll keep you in tune on that. Uh, on the COVID front, still keeping an eye on that, of course. Uh, right now, the um, the average for new cases in L A County is around nine hundred and fifty per day. Uh, the decline that they had been experiencing in the caseload over the last few months uh, has plateaued. Um, good news is the county remains at the low transmission level. Uh, they are still preparing for a potential for a winter surge of COVID as we've seen in past years. And and they're closely watching the cases in Europe because they uh, tend to foretell any increases in cases in here in the United States. Uh, in L A County, the Omicron BA five continues to be the dominant strain, but there are several sub-variants um, that they're also tracking, uh, including BA seven, which is increasing in frequency. Uh, county health is also keeping a close eye on the flu this season. It's the early County Health is also keeping a close eye on the flu this season. It's the earliest flu season. The flu season began in October and that's that is early for them and it is increasing sharply. It's the earliest the flu season has begun in five years. And they're saying it's a little difficult to predict at this time if it's going to worsen into the next year or if it's going to peak early and subside. They're also tracking R S V, which is becoming a concern, especially for older people and children. R S V is the most common cause of pneumonia. So that's it on the public health report. Wanted to note, one of the early earlier speakers had talked about Picasso and the fractional ownership. Staff is writing an item to bring that to city council for a discussion and direction in January. Also wanted to let the council know that and the public know that we submitted a letter to the L A County Board of Supervisors today regarding our concerns with their proposal to move forward. Allowing campa camping, a low impact camping in Esche areas. Again, we are concerned with you know, with allowing camping in those areas, the potential for fire. And we are concerned that they have not well defined a lot of the provisions going forward. And so we're asking the county to delay taking action on that item. Until we can get the new supervisor seated for the third district, who we expect will have some interest in this item. Which ties in very well to my next comment, which is that we're hitting that time of the year. We have a red flag warning, which has been issued for the Santa Monica Mountains and the Los Angeles County Coast. For Wednesday, November sixteenth, from seven A M to seven P M. There is a high wind warning in effect beginning this Tuesday at seven P M and extending through Wednesday at seven P M. They are expecting to see winds that could be peaking at up to seventy-five miles per hour in the mountains. With humidity levels expected to drop below fifteen percent. So we'll be watching that closely in the next few days. And wrapping up personnel as necessary. And then tomorrow, we'll be attending a meeting of the Los Virginas Malibu Council of Governments. And then I would like to turn it over to our Assistant Attorney Christine Wood. And then after that, if I could please go to Lieutenant Carr for a police report. And I see Mayor Protem as his hand raised.
Yeah, I just have a quick question for you, Steve. I have not heard of any P S P S alert for Wednesday. Have first question is, have we received one? And second is, if we haven't, is it too late for them to legally shut down the power on Wednesday?
I have not heard any alert or any any announcement that they would be going into a P S P S. Normally, they go into an alert period before that. So let me check with my staff and see if I have any more information on that. But as of this afternoon, I had not heard of anything pending.
Is there like a forty-eight hour notice period that they're required, they're supposed to comply with, or am I mistaken in that?
Let me double check on that. I believe that's what they they strive to do. But I believe if the conditions worsen and if necessary, they will turn off power if they need to. But let me double check on that question for you.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Mister Mayor. If we could turn to City Attorney Wood at this point, thank you.
Greetings. Christine, how are you?
I'm fine, Mayor. How are you? Thank you, Steve. I am. I appreciate the time today. I'm here to talk to you about the term sheet that was entered into with the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. Late last month. And to provide a little bit of an overview of the term sheet and to answer some frequent questions that we've received about the term sheet. I am going to share my screen briefly, if that's okay. I'd like to just provide a quick overview of some details. I'm going to briefly, and this is very brief presentation, so please don't be alone. I'm just going to use it as a visual. I'm going to provide you a quick review of the timeline, just to put some context to the term sheet. So just recall, back in September two thousand fifteen, the city council authorized staff to transmit the petition to create a Malibu Unified School District via resolution. A city initiated petition for unification of a school district is a relatively new thing. It's only, we've only been allowed as a city to do this for the last twenty years. And there's not been a city anywhere in the state that's been able to use the new the new law to unify or create a school district. So in the work that we've been doing, we've really been laying we've been really laying a groundwork and treading in very new and unfamiliar territory. And January two thousand sixteen, the parties formed Monk, the Malibu Unification Negotiations Committee. Really was designed to engage in negotiations to try and find a financial solution that would allow for a separate Malibu Unified School District. The parties agreed to Monk. One of the things that happened in Monk that made it a really unsuccessful or a solution that didn't work for the parties was that Monk had really come up with this idea that there would be a cliff. That there would be a point at which Malibu would pull back resources and then Santa Monica would kind of would fall off this cliff. That there would be a huge loss of revenue that would be unsustainable for Santa Monica. In August two thousand, I'm sorry, hold on just a minute. Am I unmuted?
You're unmuted.
Okay. In August two thousand seventeen, the city council, after Monk and the Monk negotiations seemed to have not worked. In August two thousand seventeen, the city council directed the city manager to go ahead and submit the petition. And then designated the city manager and the city attorney to negotiate directly with Santa Monica Unified under the guidance of the School District Ad Hoc Committee. Those negotiations started. And there there were opportunities and I think it was April two thousand eighteen where they submitted the petition and then this this district asked the parties to come together and continue to have negotiations. So we issued the petition, but then there were still negotiations that that we continued in April two thousand eighteen. Those negotiations the beginning of those negotiations were unique because part of what was really discussed was how do we create separation? That is equitable. There was long conversations that the negotiating parties had about what equity meant and how we would leave the school district in a way that would allow it to not see any type of a loss, but would allow it to grow. And and continue to experience the type of growth that it had been experiencing. In September two thousand nineteen, after, you know, over a year of negotiations, the council then allowed for kind of a three-pronged approach. We were still continuing with the petition. We were still continuing to negotiate. But we were also considering any other options that would allow for separation. And that is what allowed us at the beginning of this year to finally get the district to agree to a third party mediator. We we got a mediator that a neutral third party, truly a neutral third party who had expertise in basic aid districts and county committees on school district organization. And and I personally believe the mediator is really what has allowed us to get to this this term sheet. Because it really allowed her to, she, the mediator that we've used has allowed both, she's she's allowed the district to see where there's been some flaws and some some weaknesses and and some of the things that they've asked for and has allowed us to do the same. And has allowed us to then come to this particular term sheet. The highlights of the term sheet are that it creates a conceptual financial model that now allows both districts to maintain sufficient revenue and revenue growth. That will provide for the same or greater level of education programs in both territories. We had not had that before. This conceptual framework. There had been discussions. But there had never been a time where both sides had agreed to what would be equitable for both parties. The term sheet also provides the series of agreements that are necessary that we still need to negotiate and finalize. And that includes the tax sharing agreement and operations agreement and a joint powers agreement. Those are really some of the details that will allow us to implement unification. But the conceptual framework allows us to agree to some real basic terms of equity, which were the the real building blocks that were keeping us from being able to reach any type of an agreement before. The term sheet also has the parties agreeing to special legislation as the way to implement unification as opposed to the county committee process. Which allows us to take away some of the the unknown, right? Because remember, we're walking down a path. No city has walked down before. No county committee has walked down before. And there was a lot of risk going through the county committee route. And now, because we're going as a united group, we'll be able to pursue special legislation to implement unification versus going through the county committee route. And the term sheet provides a detailed timeline of the process. It's important to kind of put the the framework again in context. Remember, one of the things we really talked about in terms of the the cities negotiating. We had to acknowledge that Malibu residents contribute a significant amount of money to the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District each year. It's one of the reasons why the the district has wanted local or the city, I'm sorry, and its residents have wanted local control. Because contributing forty-one million dollars, that was the number for this particular school year in property taxes. That's property taxes and parcel taxes. Plus, there's other state and federal funding that are generated by by Malibu. And contributed to the district. Those those contributions are going to happen whether there's one Malibu student in Santa Monica Malibu Unified, or there's fifteen hundred students. Those property taxes, those parcel taxes are going to go to the district regardless of the enrollment numbers that are affiliated with Malibu residents. And so it's important to recognize that the ability to gain local control and the ability to then try and create a school district that reflects the needs, desires, wants of the the community. It's it's important, but it's also whether whether we come to these terms or not, those funds are going to continue to go to the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District. And so it's important to find a way to now obtain local control over the type of education that that you want for your your school age children. The real benefits of the term sheet in context again is that there is an agreed upon growth factor now. We now have identified and defined what equity is. And as long as the Santa Monica, the future Santa Monica Unified School District reaches it for at least four percent growth. Then that is satisfactory for Santa Monica to feel like that they've been made whole. And we as a district, a separating district, will agree to ensure them that four percent growth for a certain period of time. That is the equity figure that we've been able to agree with, agree on. And it's taken us several years to get to that. Each future district, another benefit is that each future district, by the terms of the term sheet, will keep their own property taxes, the property taxes that are generated in their jurisdictions. They will keep those property taxes. That has been a point of contention for the last I want to say four years, eleven of all four years, but my understanding is that's been a point of contention for decades. The each future district will keep their A V as well as each future district will keep their own local revenues. Another benefit is that there is a date at which no further aid will be provided to either future district. That doesn't necessarily have to be the case. Some unifications, some separations happen. And districts are forever supporting each other. And under the terms of this term sheet, there is a date at which no future aid will be provided. And that's right now, twenty forty-two. I could be misspeaking, but I think it's twenty forty-two. And the agreement could allow for no contribution. If Santa Monica's growth organically naturally exceeds four percent each year, then the future Malibu Unified School District will have no contribution. So those are the benefits of the term sheet. As as it exists now, our next steps, as I mentioned, are to to define put some details into those three agreements, the operational agreement, the tax sharing agreement, and the joint powers agreement. And those are the things that the parties will do over the next few months. Until we get to the point at which special legislation will take us to to our next, our next steps. That is it. I'm, I don't, Steve, I don't know if it's it's an appropriate time to take questions, but that I wanted to opportunity to hear about the term sheet firsthand and I'm available for questions if there are any.
Thank you, Christine. I appreciate that. I see you to have a hand.
Just one quick, Christine, when you describe these various terms, such as the four percent growth rate, the drop dead date for contributions. Those are objectives that the parties have agreed to strive for, correct? They're not they're not terms of any agreement as of this moment.
They are the conceptual framework that makes up the term sheet.
I just want to make sure that the public, though, understands that when you describe these as terms of an agreement, we don't have any agreement that binds anybody to these as terms. These are what the parties are going to try to negotiate to achieve in the three agreements that are referenced in this term sheet, correct?
The parties have agreed to a conceptual framework. And those are the terms, the term sheet represents the conceptual framework. And so the details of those will be spelled out in the three agreements, yes. I think that answers your question.
So, thank you, Mister Mayor. I did want to briefly respond back to the Mayor Protem's question about the P S P S. No, we have not yet received an alert. We would not be surprised if we did receive one tomorrow. There is no requirement that they provide notice ahead of a shutdown. However, they typically try to provide forty-eight notice, forty-eight hour notice in advance when they are expecting to see those conditions coming. But as of now, we have not received anything.
Thanks for that update, Steve.
You're very welcome. And then lastly, Mister Mayor, if I could turn to Lieutenant Carr for a report from the Sheriff's Department. Thank you.
Mister Carr is available. Lieutenant Carr, we would love to see you. There you are.
Good evening, Mister Mayor and members of the council. I'll start off again, as usual, with quality of life issues. I want to start off with the potential red flag warning coming up Tuesday and Wednesday. We have pre-hired personnel for fire watch. So expect to see more patrols throughout the canyons. As we head into this wind event. I will say this, that regarding the voter home issues and R V issues on Pacific Coast Highway. We have adjusted some staffing and everything in the crime impact team. And they've been utilizing the electronic ticket riders very, very well. They've been working out very well for them. So last week, there was a bit of a slowdown. They issued a hundred and twenty and included twenty-six oversized vehicle citations. The week before, they were at approximately two hundred and twenty-five parking sites, thirty of which were for the oversized vehicle ordinance, approximately thirty. I just got used to that system, so that's an approximate number. With that, I'll lead into traffic, traffic collisions. Again, we're pretty much on par with the year so far. We didn't have any fatal traffic collisions in the month of October. I know we had one today. And the details of that are still unfolding as we do that investigation. However, in October, we didn't have any and we are down fifty percent for the total year. Again, speed is a huge issue as well as turning issues and things like that. So I caution everybody to to drive carefully. And to especially watch out for pedestrians, bicyclists, bicyclists and motorcycles. Regarding crime. Crime, again, the trend is pretty much down with the exception of residential burglaries, as I explained in the last meeting and on the public safety meeting. Those aren't the same type of high value losses that people were seeing in other areas of our reporting district. These were relatively minor. We made several arrests in those. Vehicle burglaries, though, as far as people breaking into vehicles. Still, we have the same trend we have the whole year, which is a higher trend than last year. Excuse the radio. I recommend people not to leave their valuables in the vehicle, lock the doors and and things like that and to prevent thefts from vehicles. I believe a lot of those, though. Um, I believe a lot of those, though, are usually from tourists and and that kind of nature. And with that, I will take questions.
Thank you, Lieutenant Carr. Steve, you're in. I see your hand.
Yes, Lieutenant Carr, first, I want to thank you for the work you've been doing. Uh, and I appreciate, I communicated with you with an email a little bit earlier regarding what we were doing to deal with some of these. Vehicles parked on PCH, and you were kind enough to respond to that. I just. Perspective of of the calls I get. This vehicles on PCH overnight are probably exceed all the other calls I get in any other issues. And my concern is it it becomes a, an issue where the residents begin to perceive that. With these things sitting there and not being ticketed, that we're not getting our, the benefit we should be getting out of the sheriff's department, okay? And just to give, I mean, I'm getting calls from people to say, Steve, why don't we find another way? You know, hire another group to come in and do that. And I don't want to go there, right? So, you know, you're, again, you're focused on getting, I do appreciate your focus on dealing with those. Overparked vehicles. I encourage you to continue to do that. I think it will send a message to the community that says we are getting the value we need out of our sheriff's department. So anything I can do to help you do that, let me know. But I do appreciate your effort heading in that direction. Thank you very much.
I do appreciate that. I did want to put a side note, those. Uh, once we got those electronic citation machines online, they have been a huge help, a huge help.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Lieutenant Carr. Okay. I believe that takes us to. Uh, city council subcommittee reports and mayor and council member meetings, attendance and reports and inquiries. Uh, Steve, Karen first and Steve.
Thank you, Paul. Um, let's see. I do want to thank all of our public speakers. Uh, and I was wondering the same thing uh that Mary Ann Riggins asked. Uh, about the MRCA and any um applications uh for their specific plans for the Bluffs. And Ramirez Canyon. Um, so I, I'm sure a lot of people in the city want to know what's going on with that, so. We're all going to be watching. That's all I can say. Um. I want to acknowledge some of the. Not good things that have happened recently. Um. I believe the fatality count is one from the crash uh. At the bottom of Canaan today. I hope it doesn't go up. I don't know if there's something that can be done to make the arrestor bed more. Evident. I know improvements have been made to it since it was installed. Uh, I know signage was also improved, and I just, you know, I don't know. Is there anything more that we can do? Uh, on that long, long grade that somehow a lot of people end up missing. We've had a lot of deaths. Uh, as we said, uh, in memory, uh, adjourning our meeting in memory of. At the beginning, uh, and we also had the five people that were killed up near Magoo Rock. Uh, on the sixth, so. Just a lot of tragedies lately, even if our uh vehicle collision count is down. Um, I want to acknowledge since our last meeting, we passed the four year anniversary of the Woolsey Fire. And obviously, it's been beyond challenging for the entire community, for the city. Um, and then with other factors on top of it like COVID. So I just want to put the message out that the city will continue to work with the community to help them rebuild. And I know that's a huge priority. Obviously, that's one of our top three priorities as a council. Um, the election results are not finalized. Um, and I'm not sure when uh election results will be certified, but uh on December twelfth, we will. Have two new council members sworn in. I wish them all the luck in the world. And I want to commend everybody who uh who ran. And ran a campaign, put themselves out there. I do want to congratulate Stacy Rouse, Malibu, Malibu's newest only member. Of the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School Board, and I want to thank her in advance for her service. Uh, the red flag warning, I hope everybody will stay alert. Please execute the plan that I'm sure you've been putting into place. The last four years, um, and the the winds, we never know what they're going to bring. Um. We know it can happen. Some of the good news, I want to thank Christine Wood for the report and the the explanation that she gave. Uh, right, we don't have a contract, we don't have a. A defined agreement, but we have, uh, we have a framework. And we have a timeline. And I think whoever gets on the new um. Uh, school district separation ad hoc committee will work diligently on that. I really, really want to thank Christine Wood and everybody that served on the school district separation ad hoc to date. Uh, with a very few exceptions, we met every Friday for two hours. A lot of work went into it. And I want to thank those people. Um, I do want to say, uh, the Malibu five K and half marathon took place on November fifth and sixth. I went on the sixth, uh. Our mayor, Paul Grisanti, was there. Council member Mikey Pearson was there. It was a huge success due to a lot of planning on the part of uh. The race organizers and the volunteers. And I wanted to give some information about the race. Uh, we had. Forty one Malibu Elementary School students ages four to ten compete. Uh, Webster Elementary School Principal Ted Wakeman. Put out two challenges for the event, one directed to parents and one to students. We had one hundred and eighty four Malibu residents participate. And dozens and dozens more show up in support of the racers uh or to volunteer. Uh, Malibu Chamber of Commerce Chair Chris Wisner competed both days in the five K and the half marathon. And the event raised over seventy three thousand dollars uh to contribute to uh two groups. Over fifty nine thousand to the Boys and Girls Club of Malibu. And the balance to a an organization called Girls on the Run of Greater Los Angeles. And I hope next year more people in the community will uh enter that race. Um, and then tomorrow uh is my final meeting as president of the Las Virginas Malibu Council of Government. Uh, and um, there's an item that I think many of us will be interested in on the agenda, which has been published. For the past week or so, uh, that's item seven A, and it's about the COGS homeless grant funds from the county. Um, so if you're interested in that, uh, I suggest you tune into the COG meeting tomorrow. It's from eight thirty to ten. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Steve?
Uh, Trevor had his hand up. He may want to go first. I don't know what he. Earlier, yeah, let him, he may have some information. I don't.
Okay, I was just gonna uh comment on the MRCA comment. Um, this is a, this and, but I was informed Richard's gonna address this after council comments, but. This is uh, the MRC apparently does not intend to go to a CDP and looking to use a public works process. Um, instead, which does require um consultation from the coastal commission and then with the city. But it's not through a formal CDP process, but Richard will talk more about that um after the council comments.
Thank you, Trevor. You're up, Steve.
Okay, thank you, Trevor, and thanks, Paul. A couple items. I got an email today about the car shows that were taking place at Zuma Beach, I guess, yesterday. Uh, and I just, look, I, you know. We're talking out of both sides of our mouths, guys. We're complaining about the car shows at Zuma Beach, and I'm running car shows that are authorized by the city over at Bluff Park. And we've got to figure out what the hell we want to be. Yeah, don't shake it up. Yeah, we are, Paul, all right? So, I mean, if we're gonna run car shows, we ought to. And and I'll tell you what, I mean, I live on Malibu Canyon. And on Sunday mornings, trying to get out of my, by Harvard Vista. On the Malibu Canyon, I have to deal with all these race cars coming up Malibu Canyon. At like sixty, seventy, eighty miles an hour. So these, this, these car shows are not helping us. We ought to figure out what we want to do and and to do it consistently across the city. That's one thought. Okay. A couple of things I want to talk about earlier this week or earlier last week. Uh, Mikey Pearson and I had an A and F administrative finance committee meeting. And the objective of that was to try and approve about nine hundred fifty thousand dollars. To go to the planning department to hire some contract programmers to help us sort of dig our way out of some of these. Projects we've got sitting on the planning department and get them approved. And we did that. And I think that is a indication that the city does in fact. Uh, want to try and do the best we can to help us uh move this process forward. But as I expressed in the A and F meeting, this nine hundred fifty thousand dollars is not the silver bullets going to fix this process. There are other things we're going to have to address. And I will spend more time talking about that. This item has to come to the city council for some approval. And when it does that, I've got some other comments I want to make about that because I think. If we're going to get ourselves out of this hole, we're going to have to do more than just pour money into it. We've got to make some decisions. To help us fix some of the things that are going on right now. And I'm hoping, like I said, I'll spend more time talking about that. When it gets to the city council meeting. The second meeting I sat through this week was the Zerasis meeting. And that's the zoning ordinance and code enforcement process uh. Meeting, and what we dealt with were temporary use permits. This is again, Mikey Pearson and myself were part of that meeting. And our objective there was to sit down and say, you know, we've got some of these community services. Uh, art, art groups and other things that have been struggling to get temporary use permits. So our objective was to make it easier for them to hold their events on some of the city properties, Legacy Park, Bluff Park, maybe in City Hall. And and eliminate the need for them to go through the nine miles and Bob, of that mile, nine miles. Of barbed wire and broken glass to get a temporary use permit. They don't have to pay the fees, they don't have to do the mailings. And our our objective there said, you know, these folks are, we understand what they're doing. Their impact on the community is fairly small, so letting them do that is something that we thought was a good idea. And the second thing are, we did, and that's a racist meeting, was talk about some of these uh permits. That allow people to have serial events like the Tranqus Market, okay? So they want to have events going through the summer as opposed to having to get, uh, opposed to having to get a temporary use permit. Each thing that they do, we can come up with a set, a um decision. That gives them approval for that in the beginning, and they can work that through the whole summer, so it makes their life a little bit easier. And again, the the the, my objective in doing that was to sort of loosen the rules up a little bit. But at the same time, make sure we were protecting the neighborhoods in terms of where these temporary use permits were being issued. Um, you know, the 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 purpose of a temporary use permit back in the beginning. Was to allow events to take place in places where they weren't originally designed to to exist. Uh, and make sure that the impact on the communities were as as minimal as we can. I think we did that, okay? Uh, the, that process is now going to go in front of the planning commission. The planning commission will vent that in front of the public and then bring it back to the city council. Uh, and I think we, we did what we wanted to do, but let the public take a look at that thing. And if they have some additional suggestions, I'd love to hear them. And then finally, the only other comment, well, you see what else I got? Uh, Picasso, I'll, I'll just let me finish up that. Uh, the, one of the things we did in Zerasis. Was it reinforced the process that says if people want temporary use permits, any of these commercial properties. They have to be in compliance with our rules for dark sky ordinances. And for the rodenticide ordinances. So maybe the Chamber of Commerce would send a little meat, a little note to some of their members. Just reminding them that if they, if they've got some plans to do that for the Christmas season, they better get themselves in compliance with all of those things. Uh, the last thing I want to just mention is Picasso. And I know, Steve, you said you're going to bring something back to us in January, but guys, this thing's been hanging around for a long time. So I look forward to getting that in front of us. And then. Uh, the same comments everybody else had, San Ant or Windsor coming, folks. Be careful of what you're doing, make sure you know what's going on, and protect yourself because this is supposedly going to be one heck of an event. So Paul, back to you.
Thank you, Steve. Mikey or Bruce? Mikey. See your hand.
Here I am. Okay, thank you, Mayor. Um, first of all. I want to thank the speakers. Uh, I always appreciate that. Lonnie, that was very interesting what you read at the back of an SDE bill. Um, I have never seen that. Um, probably a downside of getting all my bills online. You don't tend to see the small print as easily. Um. That is actually fascinating. I'm wondering how that jibes with our um. Poison free um codes, so I'm curious about that. That is fascinating. Um, I had never heard that. The generators too is interesting, but those poles, yeah, that's fascinating. Thank you for sharing that. I did not know that. And I don't think uh Craig Hill is here, but I do want to share something I, about Picasso. I talked with someone at Picasso a few months ago. Don't remember the name. It was somebody, I think, in their marketing department or an outside marketing agency they hired. They were trying to, I don't know what they want to talk about, but I said, sure, let's talk. What is it? Something about their messaging. The one thing that that person shared with me unasked for that was interesting. And I'm, I think I have it right, was that their plan was for a maximum of five units in Malibu at all. And with what Craig said, it makes me think, well, maybe that's just not true. Um, which. Doesn't shock me. Let's put it that way. So, um. I know Trevor's been working on this for a long time, and um, there's a lot. In the background legally on that, so I look forward to seeing what comes forward there. Um. Deborah Frankel, thank you for your nice words. Uh, Mary Ann Riggins, I had a feeling that was the answer. On MRCA, that is horrifying. Good Lord, um. Steve McClary, as far as this wind event coming, all I can add is that arson watch has been activated. So you have another hundred people, including Paul and I, being asked to be out for this event. I will say today. I got an alert on my phone from the AI panel camera up on Castro Peak. And boom, it saw that fire from the crash at Canaan so quickly. And then I literally went outside and I could see the smoke. Uh, boy, did that thing. I mean, I was on the phone with McLaren like before anyone knew about it. Um, so that panel cameras and. I'd have to say, it's the first time it's ever picked up a fire aimed at Malibu. Generally, it's picking up fires in the valley. It's picked up fires two mountain ranges past the valleys. Um, this thing is so sensitive. And when I'm sitting there with a microscope trying to see, is there a fire sixty miles away? So, uh, it was actually pretty interesting. And I have no idea if that's still in a uh. Some sort of. Alpha stage, or if the public can look at it, I, I have no idea if you, everyone can sign up to look at that panel camera and get alerts. Uh, but that was pretty interesting. Um. As far as the election, I think Karen kind of covered it. Um, you know, thank you to everyone who participated in that. And and ran. It's 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 a lot of work. It's a hard deal and. When they, it seems to me, I I don't recall the votes ever coming in so slowly. Um, I don't remember that. In the past like this, it's very interesting. I don't know what changed. It feels like there's been a big protocol change. Um, we got a little tiny dump late this afternoon of more votes, but uh. Really slow unless I'm, maybe I just, my memory is faded, which also. Um, it's much, remember. Thought as Karen, it was uh. A really well-run event, and it was great to see. I know a Malibu local won one of the, one of the big races. And uh, I forget who. Um, it's just, it's good to see something so outrun and some people so conscientious. Um, it's, it's really, it's really done well. Uh, that's what I'll say. And and over fifty nine K to the Boys and Girls Club is amazing. They do a really good job. I'll say that. Um. The Veterans Day celebration at the synagogue was, it was so great to see that event back. The Veterans Day celebration at the synagogue was, it was so great to see that event back. Um. And uh it just. Not only honoring veterans, but there was performances, there was kids involved. And there was handmade cards on every seat there um that were really. I mean, they're just really well done. It's just a fantastic event. Um and I appreciated being a part of it with most of the rest of the city council. So that that was excellent. I think uh Steve has covered ours, the racist and A and F meetings completely. Um that I think the. The racist meeting was only because of a small power outage that we weren't aware of at the time we did our last one. But I think in uh hindsight, it maybe gave us a little more time to sort of think through um some things is. Figuring all this out has been complicated and tough to try and find the right balance. And uh I know we have a little ways to go, but I felt like we made good progress. Um. Excuse me, I check my notes. Uh on school separation, I want to thank uh. Christine for her report and a huge thanks to the entire team for the work getting us this far. I mean, I there are so many people that have worked on this for so long. Many of whom I'm completely unaware who they are, and I just, I just can't tell you how much I appreciate the years people have been. Been on this. Um we have a lot of work to go. Um but getting this term sheet done is actually a huge stride forward. Yes, it's now we need our best and brightest to continue. Till we get this over the line. We have work to do, as Christine pointed out, we're not there. Um. Bruce, I have no idea why you're trying to pick this apart. I honestly don't get it. Just to be honest, I. You know, I was told what you've been saying in the media. Uh but this, I think this is a huge win for the city. I mean. I believe it was ninety-five percent of the citizens that were surveyed. Wanted this, wanted us to separate. Um. And we have a team with like experts in school accounting. Um separation experts, our attorney, I mean, people with combined decades of experience. On on these issues and how to make these agreements, and it has not been easy. Um I was sorry to see that you you abstained on it. Um I'm not sure why you did that, Bruce. Um. I know you wanted to be a bigger part of it, and it's just not the way it worked out, and I'm sure you'll have comments, and I get that. Um. And I do want to say, yeah, to uh some of your comments I saw, it is intensely political. What we're doing on school separation has a huge political um component to. We're all very aware. Of the different angles and posturing and strategies in play. And um. Still, when we all looked at it as an entire team. This was the win that we needed to have. This is where we needed to get. Um this is a win for Malibu and Malibu's families to get this far. And thanks to everyone who's reached out on it. Um but now. The county committee, the state board of education, they all know that this agreement has happened. That we can hold this this line. And now we can pursue special legislation as well. So and that was a huge part to overcome that we were struggling with. Um. Bruce, I I don't want to go after each other. I have no desire to, but I'm not sure why you said Karen and I are grandstanding. We haven't commented on this publicly once. You're the only one commenting on it, not us. Um and it's a team effort. There's no. You know, honestly, I just, I don't get it. And I. So to the new city council, whoever it will be. I trust you will honor the hope and faith our citizens have in the city council to finish this. There's a timeline, the steps are laid out, the team knows where the tricky parts are, and we'll get you up to speed. And I thanks again to the entire team and the huge number of Malibu parents and others that have been a part of this for many years. And to Craig Foster for your support and insights to get it to this point. That was absolutely um. Absolutely vital and um. I believe that's it. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you, Mikey. Bruce? You have the floor.
Thanks, Paul. My hand down. So thank you to the speakers as well. Um. On the issue, Lon- Lonnie um. Bro- brought that to my attention a couple of days ago, and I suggested that she should. Raise it with city council if she thought it was something we should, that residents should hear about and. Think it is something to be on the lookout and consideration. Um. Over the past week or so, I've been working with um Lonnie and Scott McCullough, the lawyer that was hired by the uh a number of the residents to deal with telecom issues. Um there is an open issue, believe believe there's an open issue that was that was not addressed when we adopted the um. Non right away ordinance back in April, the proposed ordinance, and um hopefully in two weeks, we're gonna be bringing forward a proposal to get. To to plug a hole that was left in that and assuming we bring that forward, Lonnie will have something, Lonnie and her council have something to say about that. Um. The Picasso issue, you know, we we've been asking to have something brought to us for, I think, close to two years now. So it's good to hear that we're gonna get something hopefully in January. Um I think this is gonna be really important to get done because I I agree. Um they're not, they're not, they're not gonna be content with five. And I read that um. Airbnb and or Picasso may be looking at also something to do with ADUs now. So you know. It's gonna be really inexpensive for them. If we get AD, if we start getting ADUs to start purchasing ADUs and selling membership units in them. Uh so you know, we we need to get this under control. Um. The T, I'm 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 glad to hear the T U th- T U P thing is progressing. Um I I hope that will get to us and we can discuss it. You know, we we can't talk about it um because we've got two members of the council who are on that committee, so we, the only time we can talk about it. Is publicly at meetings. Um I'm hoping that. We can have a solution at a bare minimum that will address the ability of local nonprofits. Which don't charge any kind of fee for attendance. And which are open to the public at large to have a streamlined ability to get to UPS because. I I don't believe the statute was ever intended to deal with um nonprofit. Free events such as, for example, the art show at the the art walk at the um. In the park. So we ought to have a way to get things like that done in a streamlined basis. Uh I did attend the Veterans Day program. It was fabulous. I'm not gonna say anything more than what Mike already said because um let's just be repetitive. Um I received the re- an invitation. I was really surprised out of the blue a couple of days ago from a member of the city council of Aberdeen, Washington. Um to address them regarding um homelessness issues. They apparently they had seen a recording. Of me talking about Martin versus Boise, and they're they're having, it's another coastal city has similar problems to ours. They're interested in learning um what we can share with them, so I'm gonna be doing that in December. Um. Only other comment I have, oh, I'm not gonna respond to all of the ad hominem attacks. I don't understand why I was even being raised in another council member's. Report, but um. Uh it's important to me that the public understands. Um exactly what this complicated legal um document is, and that's why I ask questions I ask, and that's why I say the things I say publicly. Because I've always been taught you should um. Under sell and then deliver and deliver high if you can. Um and it concerns me that the residents are being told, for example, two years from now, we're gonna have an independent school district. And it's going to not cost us anything, and there's these. Terms that are all very favorable to us that have all been established. And. The fact is, there's a timeline that aims at having an independent school district in two years. There are a bunch of goals that the parties have agreed they will shoot for in negotiations. But I've been involved in enough large transactions to know that where the parties are when they agree to talk. And get somewhere and where the parties end up are not always the same place, and sometimes they don't even get there. So. I just don't want the public to think that there is in fact some kind of a contract to have an independent school district in two years. Um much less that we've got the terms of that contract all ironed out because we actually have none of it. We have an agreement to continue to talk, and we've got a um. Bunch of time milestones that we're gonna try to hit while we do that. And and by the way, I I never asked to be on that committee. I think that when we created that committee two years ago, I supported. Mikey and Karen continuing to be on that committee. I've never once asked to be on it since then. I've supported what they've done. With the exception of my abstain- abstention last week because I didn't think it was the proper timing to be doing this. I've supported everything that they've recommended. And um we've had practical unanimity going forward on the negotiation. So I I just don't get it, you know, I, some people. I I just don't get it. Anyway, that that's my report for this week.
Thank you, Bruce. Uh like everybody else, it's been in a a pretty energetic two weeks for me. Uh. Uh I had the honor of presenting and a tile and recognition of uh. Dennis Weber's service to the city of Agoura Hills. He is uh, he was retiring after twenty-nine years on their city council, serving as city councilman and mayor. They don't have term limits. Uh very nice man. Uh. Done a tremendous amount of wonderful things. Uh I gotta tell you, the people who came out to talk about what he had done for Agoura Hills. Were enough to bring tears to your eyes. Great guy. So happy that I had the opportunity. That same night. I went to an arson watch radio training program that was held in the basement of the sheriff's station at Lost Hills. And uh and we're, we are, Mikey is working on that. I'm working on, other people are working on that. We're working on. On being a force multiplier for the fire department and the sheriffs. In the next emergency, and I hope it's not this weekend or the next weekend or this year even. But I we we should be helpful if we can and and help make that all happen. Uh. I attended a reception held by Dr. Marwa. Dr. Marwa is a gentleman who came here from India in nineteen fifty-three. Uh as a Fulbright scholar. Uh became a dentist, uh very successful guy. Has a home in Malibu, and for the last thirty years, he's held a party for the current crop of Fulbright scholars. And it's a, it was. An honor for me to be able to attend it. And meet some of these young people who are the future of this country and their own countries if they should happen to return to the country they came from. But it's a great organization, and he's been, he's done a lot to build up uh his community. In Los Angeles, and uh I was grateful to be part of it. Uh the other thing uh. Is on uh. I went to a breakfast on election day. Uh that was held in the valley, and there were a lot of. People there include, and I ended up sitting with the uh. The aides for Ben Allen and Henry Stern. And so I I. You know, they both were aware of the fact that the term sheet was out. And they both uh said that they were, that the principals were interested in. Getting together and working on the legislation. Which I thought was very positive. And then Ben Allen came over himself. And repeated that. So that was, that was positive, and I think that was uh, I was very lucky to be there. And uh I think that there are good things happening. And. The main reason that I'm glad that we came out with the term sheet is for. The whole time I've been on the city council. We have not been able to tell the people what is going on and what the negotiations are for school separation. And to find ourselves in a position now where we can. We can have something for people to look at if they want to ask questions. And we know the answer that is not something that is still being negotiated, we can talk about it. And I think being transparent. Uh requires that we allow people to know what we're trying to do for them. And uh the other thing I really enjoyed on the Veterans Day uh. Celebration that we went to, uh there were four proclamations to be delivered. And I was grateful that Bruce and Karen and Mikey came and each. Took one proclamation, so we we were able to spread the work a little bit. And uh and make a nice appearance for the for the residents. And the uh people who came to that, and it was a great event. I'm glad I was able to do it. And I think that is pretty much it for me. So I'm gonna take us to the consent calendar now. And ask if there are, and has the public pulled any, oh, I'm sorry, Richard, I see you there. And I I had heard you were gonna tell us something, so please tell us now.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate it. I was, I'll just jump in quickly. So on the M R C A activities. The M R C A is processing with, as Trevor mentioned, a public works plan. And the reason uh why they are doing that is because pursuant to uh. Section three zero six zero five of the Coastal Act, and then also thirteen point three B of our local implementation plan. Those types of plans, if they are consistent with the city's L C P. Are reviewed and approved through the California Coastal Commission. And there are no local approvals, uh uh no local C D P approvals required from the city. Uh we'll look to make certain that. Any of their activities uh don't require any sort of local approval, so something out of our zoning ordinance. Uh but the Coastal Commission is supposed to be reviewing that in consultation with the city. Uh to ensure consistency. So we are, uh as the city manager explained, we are preparing. An item for the next planning commission or city council meeting, I'm sorry, for the next city council meeting with a comment letter. Uh to the M R C A for their notice of preparation. And then also, we are going to be reaching out to the Coastal Commission as well. Uh about e- encouraging conversations between the city and them, uh should this process proceed forward.
I see you have a hand, Bruce.
Yeah, thank you, Paul. And actually, I I meant to mention this during my comments, but this prompts it. Um. Trevor, Steve, Richard, I I hope that we're going to be um looking with a fine-tooth comb. At the question of whether they have the right to process this the way they're processing it. And if they don't, not simply play into the process by raising our issues, but object to it being done this way. Come in the in the first instance and not miss any deadline we might have for going to court if we have to, if we think we've got a a good argument for. Them not doing it this way and having to come to us for permission because having to consult with us is next to meaningless. They'll consult with us and then they'll do what they want. But if they have to get our approval, that's a different thing altogether. We want to be, if 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 at all possible, we want to be where they have to get our approval.
Then, yes, and I and I appreciate you. Sorry, Trevor. I I I appreciate what you said, council member, because I think it's important for the public to understand that exactly. Uh the way that they are proceeding right now, there won't be a public hearing at the city level. Uh it would go straight to the Coastal Commission, and I worry that a lot of the residents don't underst- uh don't understand that nuance of this section of the code.
You you know, and and it's it's important to keep in mind here that this plan has to conform with our local coastal program. It, you know, going to the Coastal Commission, you know, directly does not excuse them from compliance with it. And we are supposed to be a part of this process and to consult it. It's designed to be an efficient process for things where. You know, they're they're large process projects or multi-district projects and using it for exclusively Malibu um programs is a cynical way to use this process. And we'll be looking very closely at it to make sure that they do um adhere to the requirements of the Coastal Act and our local coastal programs to get into this. It's not agenda is for tonight. We will have many more discussions, and hopefully coastally participate against seeking, um you know, appearing here and and seeking input from our council. And our citizens on, you know, um this slew of projects that they appear to be wanting to put into the city.
Thank you, Trevor. I think I'm now at the consent calendar. And do we have any members, have any members of the public pulled any items from the consent calendar?
Yes, four items have been pulled. They are three B four, three B five, three B six, and three B nine.
Okay. And do any members of the council wish to pull any of the items from the consent calendar? Okay, I see no hands raised.
Make a motion to approve the consent calendar except for three B four, three B five, three B six, and three B nine.
I'll second.
Motion in a second to approve the consent calendar with the exception of three B four, three B five, three B six, and three B nine. Kelsey, will you be kind enough to take the roll?
Councilmember Pearson.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Uh, who do we have to speak on three B four?
We have three speakers signed up for three B four. They are Norm Haney, Doug Stewart and Mary Ann Riggins. We'll hear from Norm Haney first.
Okay. Are you available, Norm?
Uh, yes, I am. You know, I, I've discussed this issue several times. Um, and you know, I'm passionate about being able to meet in person. Thousands of people go to football games, baseball games. Without even having a mask on. I don't understand why we cannot and, and everybody knows that the communication between the person representing the project and other people that want to talk about the project, uh, and the communication is much better if it's in person. Um, the, uh, city council members or the planning commissioners can, can ask questions of people uh, from the dais and, uh, get a quick response. And I, I really think it's time that we went back to in-person meetings. Uh, if people want to wear masks, fine, they can wear masks. If they want to sit six, six feet apart, we have a huge uh, city council, uh, chamber and, and they can do that. Now, the coastal commission does both. They allow in-person and also, uh, allow, uh, people to uh, zoom in and make their comments. As a matter of fact, I've been at, uh, four of the last city, uh, last coastal commission hearings. And the only person in, the only person in person from the staff is Jack Amesworth. Everybody else from the staff is zooming in with their reports. The commissioners, however, are all there in person when they can be. Several of them do zoom in uh, when they can't make it to the meeting. Those are my comments. I, I think we should get back to in-person meetings as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Norm.
Our next speaker is Doug Stewart, followed by Mary Ann Riggins.
Hi Doug, are you available?
Yes, uh, good evening, everyone. Um, I just wanted to bring this up as a topic that, uh, I think is a product of the campaign we just had. So many people told me that they were interested in bringing that, uh, in-person meetings back. And I agree with them. I think this is a chance for us to begin to cement new relationships as well as, as Norm mentioned, actually have some face-to-face, uh, contact and dialogue to build a better connection. This COVID, uh, period is basically over. I think there's five more council meetings uh, scheduled during the emergency, uh, authorization, which ends February twenty eighth. And when I first looked at this, um, resolution, I thought, gee, we gotta be able to bring this, uh, forward. And the December twelfth meeting for the new council, we could probably make into a hybrid meeting. Same as coastal, same as Calabasas, same as so many other places are doing. I spoke to the city manager and we've got some logistics issues that would preclude that. But I do think it would be very appropriate to, if necessary, do this reauthorization to strive for a January date to come back in, uh, in-person meetings with a hybrid option. As well as looking to see what our hybrid option might be after the February twenty eighth, um, emergency, uh, statement by the governor is complete. So I think it's time to start meeting in person. I think it's time for us all to be able to shake hands, get the job done with the citizens in the room with us. And if they need be, do it by Zoom. It's also an opportunity for the staff not to have to be present all night, all day, all night. Um, by having a Zoom option. So let's, uh, try and get both of them in place with a hybrid. So I'd appreciate anything we can go do to get that moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Bill Sampson.
Mary Ann, are you available?
I am. Um, I would just like to concur with the other speakers that, um, it's time for us to come back to face-to-face. Um, all during the campaign, we had, um, there was one forum that was on Zoom, but everything else was in person. Um, people are living their daily lives. The count in the county is significantly down. And again, people have the personal choice that if they want to use a mask, um, they want to have social distancing, they can certainly accommodate that. Um, it's time for us to get back face-to-face and I would just, uh, respectfully request that you vote as a council to move this forward, um, so that the meetings can happen in person as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Our next speaker is Bill Sampson.
Bill, are you available?
I, um, uh, personal meetings are a nice thing. I will tell you that the last couple of days I've been wearing a mask, not for my protection, but for the protection of others. Because I have a cold. COVID is not over. Uh, if you want to do hybrid meetings, I'm in favor of that. Um, but saying it's over, I will give you as an example, the very first forum I attended says not one, but two other candidates sat right next to me not wearing masks, even though masks were required in that meeting. A number were required in in the meeting. A lot of people ignored that. I wound up having to sit at the back, just stay away from everybody. You want to meet in person, that's fine, but everybody should have the option of not showing up. It isn't over. It's impossible if you want to be away from people, to stay away from people in a public meeting space. So give us the citizens the chance to be uh, away and still speak to the council, whoever it might be. I've got special problems here. I'm sure I'm not alone. Um, my wife is unusually uh, susceptible to autoimmune problems and I'm not going to risk her for any of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill.
And Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay, Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, you know, the, based on what we know about the election results, I think we know what two of the votes are going to be when we have a new council sitting to decide this question. But I think for now, we're going to have a new council in a couple of weeks. Might as well just leave things the way they are for right now. Um, also, um, it sounds as if we're not prepared to go forward hybrid yet technologically. Um, and it's inconceivable to me that we're going to vote to require that sit residents have to come and speak live if they want to attend. So, um, if the options were simply that on the one hand, or continuing on Zoom, on the other hand, it seems to me that Zoom is really the only practical result. And, um, I'm, I'm going to move that we approve this. But in recognition, the, the comments that have been made are certainly well taken. And, and, and all comment, the, the comments that have been made are certainly well taken. And, and, and all comments, Bill's, Bill Sampson's correct, COVID is not over. Um, and I for one, I'm not going to sporting events with fifty thousand people, um, much less without a mask. But, you know, some people are, some people aren't. Um, tends to break down interestingly in the country as to who's doing which. Uh, but in any event, this should let it just wait until we have a new council sitting and, and they can decide. We, we with the new council members can decide what to do. It's only going to be a few more weeks.
I'll second.
I move that we, um, approve this, um, resolution.
I'll second it.
Your motion and a second. Can you, any discussion? Seeing none, Kelsey, will you take the role?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to three B five. Report on the use of the temporary day use impound yard. Who pulled this and?
We have one speaker signed up for this item, Joe Drummond, and we can hear from her now.
Joe, are you available?
I, yes. Hope you're all are well. It's been an exciting couple of weeks. And I just wanted to say it's seems like there's no red wave except here in Malibu. That's so funny. Um, anyway, with the tow yard, I wanted to make sure that, um, we, you, that the Santa Monica Malibu United School District was being considered. I saw that there was a flyer put out by Susan Duiness that, um, was looking at, at sites was like a proposal to look for sites, but I thought it was going to be the, um, this high school and especially since ninety-five, I think of the cars, a third of the cars were old right from across the high school. That would be important. And it seems that the that the city is too involved with the negotiations with the like doing all these negotiations for the tow, the tow Sierra tow, I think it is. Um, where it used to be Malibu tow years ago, and I think they would do their own towing and negotiation, negotiating and all that. But anyway, I just think as long as it's not as long as it's the high school or or it's, uh, a more central location that doesn't impede anybody, any residents or any, any, um, open space or that would be fine. So that's all I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No, that concludes public comments.
Okay. Uh, I,
Make a motion to pass it?
Uh, Steve is, okay.
Yes, I thought, I thought we had an agreement from the school district to use the parking lot over the high school. Is that not in place? At least I, I thought that, but I could be wrong.
Carrie Upton, who's the facilities manager for the, for the school, has verbally given us the okay that he will make it available. And there may be something else going on that I'm not aware of. But I think that's what's going on. I see Susan here. So Susan, would you like to comment?
Yes, that is correct. Carrie just needed from me a proposal that included the details of what we would need. And I submitted that to him several weeks ago. And now he's working on that, you know, internally to make that work is, and I, I followed up a, a week ago, I haven't heard back from him. But that is the plan at this point.
Cool. Thanks, Susan.
Uh, I thought Mikey wanted to make a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion.
We, we actually don't need a, a motion. It's a receiving file. So unless there's an objection, Mr. Mayor, you can receive and file it.
Okay, consider it received and filed. That brings us to three B six, which is a rejection of bids for the PCH median improvements project. Who, uh, who pulled this and what can they tell us?
This was pulled by Sophia Hernandez. And just give me one more moment, Mayor. I'm not seeing her in the meeting and I want to make sure we're not missing her. But no, we don't have anyone under the name Sophia or the last name Hernandez in the meeting.
Okay. Uh, Rob, would you like to give us a short report? Oh, I'm sorry, Steve?
No, it's just, it's, if Rob's going to just, I, I'm just interested to understand Caltrans is doing a bunch of work on PCH. And I'm wondering how what we're doing interacts with what they're doing. Do, is it coordinated or how does all this stuff come together? As if one person digs it up and somebody else to go back, we, we gotta dig it up twice. That's not what we want to do. And I'm sure Rob has got the sucker figured out. So Rob, if you, any insight you could give me, I would appreciate it.
Yeah, digging up twice or doing things twice is not the best idea. And so, yeah, I, I've been coordinating pretty closely with, with, uh, Caltrans Project Management and their construction crews on actually what they're planning on doing. Uh, all of our projects are kind of coordinated, kind of so, uh, uh, yeah, everything's coordinated from what their projects and our project timing wise and whatnot. So when they have projects close to coming out to bid, they let me know, uh, we can adjust our schedule and, and vice versa.
Cool.
I, I briefly saw an iPad number seven.
I did as well, Mayor. I'm going to ask them to unmute and see if that's our speaker.
Thank you.
Sophia, if you're on your iPad, we're asking you to unmute.
I am not Sophia. Apologize for the hand raising.
No problem. And Mayor, uh, we don't have our speaker present.
Okay. All right. Uh, Rob, would you like to give us the two-minute version of what, what we went out to bid? We got bids, what happened?
Um, they were extremely high. Uh, um, they were more than expected. Um, and that exceeds our funding for, for this project. We looked at measure or, or for Metro, seeing what available funding there is that there would have to be. Um, some, some moving around some funds, but rather than doing that, I think the best thing to do is kind of look, um, at different ways we could reduce the cost of the proj- project. Uh, we did get some input from some of the contractors who bid on it. Um, indicating what items actually drove the price up really high. So we're going to go back and look at those items, um, come back with some alternatives, work with our public works commission to come up with some things that we can do to see if we can reduce prices and come up with a plan on how to move forward with this.
So Trevor, we need a vote to reject the bids, is that correct? Does anyone want to make that motion?
I'll make a motion to reject the bids.
I'll second.
Motion and a second to reject the bids.
That was staff's recommendation.
Staff's recommendation, yes.
Kelsey, would you be kind enough to take the role, please?
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, three B nine is the Jake Currie Idgian Citizenship Award, which I probably mispronounced. Uh, do we, who pulled this, please?
We have one speaker signed up for this item, Jonathan Kay, who we tried to find earlier. I still don't have anyone under the last name Kay, but I'll ask the Jonathan present in the meeting to unmute and see if he's available.
Okay. It is, it is not I that you're looking for.
Thank you. Then Mayor, the speaker is not present.
Okay. Uh, perhaps Kristin could tell us which.
Since, since the person that pulled it's not here, can't we just approve it?
I'm, I'm more than willing to, it, I'm sorry, Trevor?
As, as I, we've opened the public hearing. There's no one here that wants to speak on the item. So, uh, you don't need to get staff report unless you read, unless there's a interest from the council. Uh, you can close the public hearing and, um, and take a, take a vote, take a motion and vote if you want.
Okay. So anyone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. I can.
That's a A second and a third. So Kelsey, will you take the role?
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That brings us to item number four A.
Mayor, item number four A was continued upon approval of the agenda.
All right, good. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. Which brings us to item number six A. Do we have a report on item six A?
Good evening. Oh, sorry.
Hello, Elizabeth.
Hello, good evening, Mayor Grisanti, City Council. Um, the item before you for discussion is the prioritized list of issues to be discussed at the yearly meeting between the city and the county library to discuss the use of the Malibu library set aside funds for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. In November of each year, the city and the county library staff meet to discuss the Malibu library set aside funds and, uh, the potential uses of the set aside funds for the following fiscal year. In preparation for the meeting, um, in November, the city council is asked to, um, to approve a prioritized list of issues to be discussed at the yearly meeting in accordance with the memorandum of understanding between the county of Los Angeles and the city of Malibu. In the past years, the library subcommittee has considered the use of the annual library set aside funds in the spring. Um, and made a recommendation to the city council after the November meeting between the city and county staff and in line with the city's budget process. This step of identifying a prioritized list of issues is identified in the MOU. Following the meeting with the county, staff will bring an item to the Malibu Library Subcommittee to, one, um, receive an update on the Malibu library set aside funds. And two, to consider the uses of the funds for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Staff will then, uh, bring the subcommittee's recommendations to the city council for approval. Next slide, please. A Malibu library subcommittee meeting was held on September thirteenth, at which time the subcommittee reviewed the current set aside, uh, fund expenditures, reviewed the recommendations, um, uh, from the two thousand eighteen Malibu library needs assessment, received public input and discussed the priority, uh, priorities for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. The subcommittees recommended the following. The subcommittees recommended the following um fiscal year twenty three, twenty four funding priorities for discussion with the county. As shown on the slide before you. These include the current services and service metrics. Continuation or augmentation of the city's annual allocations. Feasibility of the implementation of the immediate and short term recommendations of the two thousand eighteen needs assessment. Development of conceptual plans to relocate the main entrance of the Malibu Library. Further study of expanding services in Western Malibu. Analysis of the resources needed to develop a Malibu historical archive. Possibility of establishing a lending library to include tools and other equipment. And finally, the consideration of training courses that could be offered for the community. The city's approved uh funding recommendations for fiscal year twenty three, twenty uh twenty, sorry, twenty two, twenty three. As amended on August twenty second, two thousand twenty two. Were included in the staff report and the recommendations identified in the two two thousand eighteen needs assessment were provided as an attachment. As well as the status on the updates of the needs assessment re- recommendations. The county estimated that there would be approximately sixteen million dollars in the Malibu Library set aside funds at the beginning of fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. Going into twenty two, twenty three. At the November meeting, the county will provide updates to these financial projections. And will be that will be shared with the subcommittee and the city council. At this time, the council is asked to consider the recommendation of the Malibu Library Subcommittee regarding the prioritized list of issues. To be discussed at the yearly meeting. Um, and approve a list of priorities to be discussed with the county. The council's approved priorities will be submitted to the county for consideration in advance of the November meeting. Lastly, before I conclude, this report and in recognition of the fact that this is a slight departure from in years past. I'd like like to take this opportunity to ask the council for any feedback on how staff can best prepare for the November meeting in future years. Both in terms of process and expectation. And that um concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Elizabeth. I don't see any hands raised. May I ask a question or two? Several years ago, uh. I we were having a problem with uh employer retention at the library. And I I went to one of these meetings and. Said, well, it's obvious that our problem is that. All of our librarians are nearly all of them are commuting in. Various distances. And you know, their their goal is to find someplace where they have a short commute. And is there any way to make any kind of a differential payment to them? That is still compliant with their union agreement. And at that time I was told it was not. And now we are in a situation where gas is over six dollars a gallon. And the we have people working there who are commuting. And as far as I know. Their their union isn't providing any any way that for us to. Uh, pay them some sort of a diff commuting differential. And is that something that? Sounds remotely possible?
We can certainly ask that question.
Okay. I'd really appreciate that. It's a.
I'll just guess for public speakers.
Oh, I'm sorry. Bruce, that was excellent. Uh, do we have any public speakers?
You have two speakers signed up for this item. They are Joe Drummond and Ryan. We'll hear from Joe Drummond first.
Thank you.
Hi again.
Hello.
Hi. Um, so I just, I I've spoken on this a few times in the past, but. As long as we're not giving any funds away. To the county and keeping the funds in Malibu. And if it is to give some kind of a gas stipend for the employees, I think that's could be acceptable within limits. It should be like uh. It we should consider the Western Branch having some sort of a community center or some kind of museum or. Something attached to it that would could possibly honor the shoe mash or some, uh, there's a lot of. Artifacts in the community that we could put in there and could be studied and and it would be nice to have it attached to a library. And finding the right spot for that would be. A good idea. Um, but I mean, mainly, I'm just here to say we need to keep the money. In Malibu and for the Malibu staff or for for the Malibu residents. And we have lots of open space recently purchased, so we need this. Um, so we can't be giving away money. We need this money to purchase the land, design and construct. Malibu's second library branch is as specifically noted and provided for in the two thousand and eight memorandum of understanding. Between the City of Malibu and Los Angeles County. And yeah, and I I don't know whatever happened to the. The the three hundred thousand that we already gave away and the half a million that we were planning on giving away. If anything was ever done about that, or if it's. It's not happening, hopefully, and if. If there was just a slap on the wrist or what happened with that. That's concerning. Uh, other than that, I think that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Our next speaker is Ryan.
Hi, Ryan. Are you available?
Uh, yes, I am. I wanted to call your attention to this is the product of the memorandum of understanding that was um signed by. I think Pamela Conley Yulik in two thousand eight where we had uh. Basically agreed to not separate from Los Angeles County Library and keep the money every year. Um, and let them continue to run their library. Section thirteen, I'll read to you because I think we need to be the bigger party and abide by this agreement. And it says, the city and county library shall meet immediately upon approval of this M O U to discuss the use of the set aside funds from the date. Of approval through the following June thirtieth. Thereafter, and for the duration of this M O U. The city and county library shall meet in November of each year to discuss the use of set aside funds in the fiscal year beginning on the following July first. No less than four weeks before each of the required November meetings. The city council of the city shall take formal action to approve. A prioritized list of issues to be discussed at the yearly meeting. If the city fail, city council fails to approve such a list. The county library shall assume the city. That this that city issues and priorities remain unchanged. From the most recent previously approved list provided by the city. I think that's the condition that we find ourselves in at this time. And I don't think that's a major change. The security guard for two hundred and sixty thousand dollars. Uh, that our set aside funds are being drained for. At this library. I'm not so sure the county doesn't provide security at their own libraries and bad neighborhoods. But um, that's that's on the list now, as are most of these other items. So I'm not so sure that you can um. Do what is being proposed by staff tonight. Without disrespecting the integrity and sanctity of this M O U. So I would encourage you to follow the terms of the M O U. Because it looks like the county has not followed the terms of the M O U in the past. To the detriment of the City of Malibu of millions of dollars. And that there is an opportunity to recover those. Ill spent and inappropriate contributions gifted to third party foundations in the past. So I encourage you to take no action on this item and let the M O U work as it is prescribed. To renew what was last approved. It had been working fine. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan.
And Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Bruce, I see your hand.
Yeah, so um, I I'm okay with what's in this proposal for discussion purposes at this time. In in fact, I think it's better than where we were last year because last year. There were other expenditures that were outs that were for matters outside of Malibu that are not in this year's. Um, priorities. Going forward, I'd like to say is we we. This is just a a thought for for future purposes. We've got sixteen million dollars. That's that's. It's not a huge amount by today's purposes, today's measures, but it's it's a large amount of money. And it grows at one or two million dollars a year. So it it it's going to, it's going to double. Not that long from now. We've talked a while about Performing Arts Center in Malibu. We've talked about a community center in Malibu. Um, there are library models that incorporate performing arts centers and community centers and all kinds of things that are other than books and computers at libraries. It's it's the way things are in the twenty first century. And we may be able to kill two birds with one stone if we actually take a bigger look, bigger picture look at what we can do with this and this money. This money is gonna. Grow, we've it, you know, you could you could borrow thirty, forty million dollars and. You're gonna get one or two million dollars a year back to pay towards it. So um, you know, if if we're gonna keep the county library in Malibu and we're gonna be part of the county library system. And we've got all this money, we ought to be looking to big picture projects, not just. Paying for security guards and 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 paying for a librarian every year and continuing to have this pot grow. So um. Those are my comments, but this list of priorities looks fine for the immediate future.
Thank you, Bruce. Karen?
Thanks, Paul. Uh, I just wanted to touch on a couple of things. Um. As is stated in the um. In the staff report, uh, the uh feasibility study. Uh, of a few years ago. Recommended exactly what is said here, further study of expanding expanding services in Western Malibu. It never mentions building a branch in Western Malibu, although I do hear that repeated frequently. Uh, it's not correct. Um, then as far as the three hundred thousand dollars that was the seed money for the foundation. Uh, that was before I was on the council. But at that time, uh, the two library subcommittee members were Jefferson Wagner and Laura Rosenthal. And if my memory serves me, it was Jeff Jefferson's motion. Uh, I don't know who seconded it, and then a unanimous vote by the council to spend that three hundred dollars to hire a um. An executive director for a foundation so that the library could begin to build a foundation as other major cities uh across the country have. So we were trying to get from zero to something. Uh, when I say we, I mean the city, I was not on the council at that time. I know that there's at least one person from the county library. Uh, here in the meeting, I don't know if he would like to speak, but I'd like to give him the opportunity if he would. There may be more than one. I'm not sure if I recognize all the names.
Do we know um who we're trying to mute?
Well, I don't know if he would like to speak, but uh I do see in the meeting Gladstone Buckner. Is in attendance, or at least uh his name is here. And certainly no pressure. If you uh do not wish to speak, Mr. Buckner. Okay, so um, let me ask, excuse me?
Sure, council member, nothing, nothing in particular to add except um council member Grisanti, Mayor Grisanti, I believe, referred to. Um, some sort of um bonus for staff who work at Malibu. It actually was discussed a few years back uh with the union at the time of negotiations. And um way that we found out was that it it could only be um implemented as a system wide bonus. Um, that would kind of move around to positions that were hard to fill. So not just Malibu specifically, but. Depending on on what library had a um a a position that was vacant for an extended period of time. Um, so it actually is. Um, on the books for the county, but that's the way that it it works.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, and then I don't know for a fact, my impression is that the library does not. Uh, the county library system does not pay for security guards. Uh, at other branches. And I don't know, Mr. Buckner, if you. Can speak to that issue.
We, it it depends. We have sheriff sheriff security um. Sheriff Security Officers S S Os at, for example, the Lancaster Library. Um, in our region, and then some other locations have security guards, but I don't know who who funds those.
Thank you very much. Uh, and I'm not sure, Bruce, was that a motion?
It wasn't, but I'm happy to make a motion to to approve the staff recommendation.
Okay, I'll second that. Uh, it looks like we do still have some other comments, though.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Steve, you get to be the first to discuss.
Cool, uh, I don't think, uh, Paul, I don't think when you m- mentioned your. Stipend for gases or or travel, I don't think you were considering a bonus. I think it was more of a. Something to compensate these people for what they were going through. So I I don't know.
Subsidy, maybe.
I don't think, I don't think the bonus was the right word to the way to define that. So I I do think it's a good idea if people are. Are trying to commute in and out. I mean, the the only, the other item I have is, there's an item on here to move the. Entrance to the library to the front. I don't, what does that cost to do something like that? Any idea? Anybody have any number for what that?
Paul? I think what this says is a uh. Prepare uh a analyze the feasibility. Of moving the the entrance and decept develop a conceptual plan.
I'm just, any but in any ballpark of what it would cost to do something. My only point is, I go I go back. To the video, I think Jefferson showed us last meeting or the meeting before that. That talked about sort of the new look of what libraries are doing for a community, right? I mean, whether that's it's music, whether it's loading out instruments, whether it's and and. Uh, I I I sort of like that idea, and I guess if I had money to spend. I'd be spending money on trying to do this something out in Western Malibu. With a community center that uh provided those kinds of services. Versus trying to put a new entrance in the front of a library that I think is gonna cost a fairly. Large chunk of money, and I don't know what the hell I get for that. So that's the only thing I would. Think about when they whoever's gonna be in this meeting. I I just don't see why I want to put another entrance into the. Library, but there may be a reason for that. I just don't know what it is. So Paul, that's all I got.
Okay, I I I can answer your question. I actually have had some meetings with some of the volunteers. And there are actually doors at the front of the library and end of the library closest to the. Street. And there is a courtyard. That uh the library lets out on to there. And if that were, so basically what they're talking about doing or with the concept. That was discussed with me. Is moving the main entrance to there rather than the dark corner it's in now. And and try to get uh. Put the face of the library where people can see it. So that was their thought, and I I don't think it would be tremendously expensive because there are already windows and doors. That operate on that side of the building. So.
Let's just see what it costs, okay?
Let's see what it costs. Okay. Any more discussion? Kelsey, will you be kind enough to take the role, please?
Mayor Proton Silverstein.
Yes.
Councilor Fair.
Yes.
Councilor Pearson. Councilor Pearson, you're muted.
Sorry, wasn't working. Uh, yes.
Councilor Urine.
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item six B. And. So. Who is gonna give us a report on six B?
Uh, Mayor Grisanti, I'll give the staff report for this item.
Thank you, Kristen.
Sure. So good evening, everyone. Um, the item before you is the consideration to execute. A five year agreement with Super League Triathlon Incorporated to host the Malibu Triathlon through actually October twenty twenty seven. Malibu Triathlon has been an annual two day event held at Zuma Beach that began in nineteen eighty six. The triathlon hosts approximately five thousand participants during the two day event and complies with the city's T U P conditions. In twenty twelve, the city council adopted city council policy number forty seven. Which allows up to two temporary use permits for marathons, triathlons and cycling events per calendar year. In twenty thirteen, the city entered into a ten year agreement with Michael Epstein Sports Production. To host the Malibu Triathlon, which is one of two approved road races allowed in the city per the policy. During the ten years, the triathlon has changed ownership. But kept the same terms and the city is currently working with Super League Triathlon Incorporated. Since twenty thirteen, the triathlon has successfully operated in Zuma Beach while donating. a hundred and twenty eight thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars to the city for recreation programs under the terms of this agreement. With the agreement set to expire in November twenty twenty three, Super League is requesting a new five-year agreement, allowing them to operate the event through October twenty twenty seven. The terms of the agreement are similar to the current agreement with increased insurance limits and five percent escalating the annual donation amount, starting at twenty five thousand and topping out at just about thirty thousand four hundred in year five. If the council chooses not to approve the agreement, another option the council may consider is forming an ad hoc committee to review the road race policy and road race agreements. Uh, this concludes my report. I believe Brennan Linder is present in the meeting to answer any questions you have regarding the road race operations. Thank you.
Okay. Well, next we have public comment. Do we have any members of the public?
Yes, you have seven speakers signed up to speak. The first few are Michael Sandler, Joe Drummond, Brennan Linder, and Deb Carabette. We'll hear from Michael Sandler first.
Great. Michael, are you available?
I am. Good evening. Um, thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. My name is Michael Sandler. I'm the Assistant Vice President of Development at the Foundation Department at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. Um, I work with all of the hundreds of athletes that fundraise as part of this event for pediatric cancer research at Children's Hospital, Los Angeles. Since two thousand and seven, the Malibu Triathlon has raised much-needed funds for CHLA's Cancer and Blood Disease Institute. Over these past sixteen years, the athletes that have participated have raised over seventeen million, nearly eighteen million dollars towards our research. The funds that are raised each year are used to fuel research projects and clinical trials for the next generation of treatment for pediatric cancers. There are very few programs and no other event that provides as much funding in one lump sum for our Cancer and Blood Disease Institute uh, in the initial stages of project development as the Malibu Triathlon does for our researchers. CHLA's Cancer and Blood Disease Institute is the nation's largest pediatric hematology oncology program and one of the two largest pediatric cancer centers in the United States. Our doctors see twenty-two hundred newly diagnosed patients every year and experience approximately thirty-six thousand outpatient visits every year. So simply put, the Malibu Triathlon helps save the lives of children living with cancer here in Southern California and around the world by helping us find faster, safer, and more effective treatments for children living with cancer. So thank you to you, the city council, and Mayor of Malibu for being a part of this event over the years and being our partner in our mission to create hope and build healthier futures for our patients and their families. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond, followed by Brennan Linder, Deb Carabette, and Bill Sampson.
Hi, Joe, are you available?
Hi, yes, I'd love to hear the other speakers before going, if that's okay.
I'm I'm okay with that. Who do we have next?
Our next speaker is Brennan Linder, and we do have him available.
Hi, Brennan.
Hello, and thank you, council, for allowing me to speak here and the discussion. Uh, for those of you that I did speak actually last year, but just to reintroduce myself, I'm a twenty-four-year resident of down in Venice and Santa Monica in a weekly cyclist up in Malibu. But for the past twenty years, I've also been producing large-scale sporting events such as the Malibu Triathlon, raising money for CHLA, but also events for the Midnight Mission, Homeboy Industries, Heal the Bay, and Surf Rider. And I always have to say that I believe sport, you know, changes and transforms lives and allows people without extensive amounts of money to peer-to-peer fundraise to raise tremendous amounts of money. Um, I am the race director, which means I'm in charge of all the, I'd say, logistics um, of the event, which means the road closure. So I'm constantly working with L A DOT, LAPD, as well as the planning department on what are the closures and openings. And so I'm sure I'll be answering some questions later on here. And then the one thing I do want to address and apologize for is that yes, this year we did have a I'm not sure it was a misunderstanding with our trash company that did not pick up our trash receptacles in a timely fashion. And I say this really with a great amount of embarrassment. For I'm a graduate of CU Boulder in environmental design, I lead actually monthly cleanups here in Venice of trash. And it's something I don't take lightly. And I believe there was a seven-day delay on getting these picked up. And when I heard about it from both city council and then on a social media post, I went out, started cleaning up myself, the trash, and then within, I think it was about thirty-six hours, it was finally cleaned up. But I do have to apologize, and I'll address questions as they come up regarding this agreement. Um, we're just looking to extend the current contract to just five years and just continue raising money for CHLA. That's it. Thank you for the job.
Brennan, I'm sure we'll be back to you. Who else do we have?
Our next speaker is Deb Carabette, followed by Bill Sampson, Jim Garfield, and Michael Dulst.
Hi, Deb, are you available?
Deb, you should see a pop-up. There you go.
Thank you. Thank you, council, for letting me, um, giving me the time to speak. Um, I want to echo both what Brennan and also Mr. Sandler has said, as I have a niece who has benefited greatly from CHLA and all the money that we have raised over the last several years. CHLA was the only pediatric center who was able to diagnose what my niece had. And and so thanks to them, you know, she is, she is still, thank goodness, here and in college. But I I speak from the standpoint of an athlete, of a coach, of someone who has worked very closely with Brennan on several big events. Um, and this Malibu is iconic in our sport as well as, and when I talk Malibu, the try, as well as, um, for me as a coach, I bring women into our sport with the diversity and give them confidence. And Malibu is something that I hold training programs with every year. Um, I have used the pool at the Malibu High School to teach women how to swim. I am also the only certified USA triathlon, uh, para-triathlon coach, and I am building a program for challenged athletes in Los Angeles leading into the twenty twenty-eight Paralympics, which I have recently, in the last couple of years, had a couple of challenged athletes come and do their very first triathlon, which is Malibu, and they have had nothing but incredible experiences and have not had had nothing great, you know, great things to say about being in Malibu. They two had never been in Malibu, so it was really exciting for them. And I'm hoping to continue using that to bring more challenged athletes, more women into our sport. Um, I work closely with Brennan in coaching some of his other events. And I do work with kids also with the youth department. So there's a lot of pluses to continuing on this iconic race that I hope you will consider having us for at least another five years and anything that I can do to help any of your members or people in Malibu have a great feeling about our race. Please reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Bill Sampson, followed by Jim Garfield, Michael Dulst, and Joe Drummond.
Thank you. Bill, are you available?
I am. Thank you. Your job, council members, is to take care of the residents of Malibu. Children's Hospital is a great institution. Back when a million bucks was still a million bucks, and there were no million-dollar homes in Malibu, almost none. As the administrator and personal representative in the state trust, uh, I sought to, with that four million dollars was conveyed to that very institution. There's a floor named after the donor. I approve of it. I approve of lots of charities. My wife and I donate to them. This event, however, required us to donate our time. We could not use the highway. Probably a couple thousand Malabuites could not. Sport's a great thing. Uh, one of the speakers just said she was using the pool at Malibu High to teach. That's generally not permitted up there, but maybe it was for her. Uh, because that's private lessons you're not permitted there. Sport is a good thing. I'm glad you can do it. If you can do it without messing up our lives for two days, that's fine. But so far, that hasn't happened. Instead, we can't get out. I could even understand the professional athletes find the high-powered pros. Let them go. They're not going to be there for long. But we would wait for all day. Couldn't get in and out of our street. It happened in Malibu West. It happened out where I live. It happened all the way up the highway, all the way to uh, city limits, uh, this year and in the past. And does it benefit Malibu? No, it benefits some Malibu residents who participate in it. It does not come close to benefiting the majority of the residents. I've been known to run. I swim several days a week. I'm going to try to swim this tomorrow morning with with a cold. But this doesn't do anything for Malibu, and that's your job. Now, there's a couple of things. Mr. Lindner actually called me and said he was going to compensate us because our house cleaner couldn't get out here. We pay her anyway, no matter what we pay her. But she couldn't get here because the bus couldn't get here. Uh, he left a message on our machine. That was a month or so ago. Her check never showed up. I'm not sure if the twenty-five thousand bucks for two thousand twenty-two has shown up yet, and the staff reported it had not. Super League Triathlon, Inc. It is warranted in the proposed contract that it is authorized to do business in Cal- state of California. As of this morning, there is no such entity authorized to do business in the state of California. It also says that we agree they've always given a million dollars a year to Children's Hospital. To my knowledge, there is no audit. Without that, you can't agree to that contractual term.
Bill, that's your turn. Our next speaker is Jim Garfield, followed by Michael Dulst and Joe Drummond.
Mr. Garfield?
Hi, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Great, thank you, Mayor Grisanti, the city council. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have participated in this event since the early nineties. It has given an opportunity for the city, I believe, of Malibu to share in its beauty and share in its community spirit. I've seen the good that it has done for CHLA and understand now with the five percent increase of the donations to the city of Malibu, how much more it can do for the residents. Malibu has certainly had the image of exclusivity for many, many years. But here's an opportunity to have that image now changed a bit to have it be inclusive, which I think is a wonderful thing. If people have the opportunity of sharing in the beauty and the community spirit of the city of Malibu, it leaves nothing but positive impressions. Yes, there will be absolutely inconvenience uh, at times in the road, but this is an event that's been going on for quite a few years. So I think the residents being aware that this event has occurred for thirty-odd years, whatever it might be, that for the couple hours early, early in the morning on Saturdays and Sundays um, to be to be able to plan around it uh, is something that is manageable. One of the greater, um, I think, benefits of this event is the fact that there's been over a million dollars a year that I'm sure it's audited. I'm sure you're going to be able to find. I know that the benefit that it has, but I'm sure it's audited. You can look it up. If it's a million dollars a year, that the city of Malibu doesn't have to write a check for, but gets the benefit of, I think, everybody wins. Creating a win-win situation, I think, particularly in this political climate, is something that's very positive. So I hope you will seriously consider extending the contract. There's really nothing but upside for everybody involved, let alone the kids in the hospital, but participants and citizens of Malibu. Um, I certainly appreciate the thoughtfulness uh, that the council gives this opportunity to extend the contract for five years.
Thank you, Mr. Garfield.
Our next speaker is Michael Dulst, followed by Joe Drummond.
Hi, Michael, are you available?
Yes, I, yes, I am. Um, good evening, council, and thanking, thanking, uh, thank you for allowing me to speak. Uh, so my name is Michael Dulst. I am actually the co-founder of Super League Triathlon. Um, our organization is a small organization, about about seventeen people passionate about the sport, and we run around eight events internationally. And actually, my my business partner is an ex-professional athlete who lived around Malibu for many years and and participated in the event many times. And and he was a source of inspiring us to to continue, to to acquire Malibu and to continue its legacy. And that's what's driven us since since the beginning, the legacy of the events it has. Uh, for us, it's a purpose-driven event, doing sport for good, supporting the great cause of of CHLA, raising the money for pediatric cancer research. But also, it's about the celebrity participation, and and we believe this is a very powerful tool to inspire and raise awareness for sports and promote an active lifestyle. And I've personally been on the ground for the last two years. I heard firsthand from all the people um, how great they, how much they enjoy the event, many of them returning year on year, and how much it motivated them every year to do to do sports, to be active, to be healthy. Um, we we acquired, we acquired the event uh, just before COVID. Uh, we didn't really know that COVID was going to hit us, and and we've been since focused on bringing it back. Um, also focused on bringing it back to its shorter, shorter distances. I believe just before we acquired it and also had longer distances, which uh, which meant less, more disruption. So we tried to bring it back to its original form, short distances with lesser disruption. I'm also very aware of the the questions around the financials, and and we are committed to be transparent here. Um, but yeah, the costs, as you can imagine, the cost of operating the event has grown a lot uh, over the last years. And and our focus is is with this event is really again, focus on the legacy, doing sports for good, making it sustainable, and 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 inspire people through this, what I believe is an institution for short-distance triathlon, inspire people to to pick up the the sport of swimming, biking, and running, and doing that with with the greatest of 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 quality and and offering a great experience. Uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Dulst.
Our next speaker is Joe Drummond.
Hi, Joe.
Hi. Thanks for letting me talk. Um, I just wanted to say that I, we have a friend who's run the triathlon in in the past for years. He trained Simon Whitfield, who is an Olympic athlete, a Canadian triathlon, and it's, I know it's a great event in Malibu. However, I do think the financials need to be looked at carefully, given the the residents having to give up a lot for that one whole weekend. And I know, I know there was one, I think he said there was five thousand people participating, and one seventeen-year-old Max Wiseman raised twenty-eight thousand dollars. So if five thousand people made like, I raised at least five thousand, that would be like twenty-five million dollars. And they're only is the hospital only getting a million a year, and we're only getting twenty-five thousand a year? I don't know. I think the financials need to be looked at a little more carefully. We've got probably a banker coming on to city council, so he'd probably want, I would assume, more money for the hospital and for Malibu, for the inconvenience, and to make sure that the trash is picked up and everything is is all great for that weekend and that um, the participants, but as well as the residents all enjoy uh, the benefits of the the triathlon. So that's all. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
And Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay, so now it goes to the council for comments and discussion. Uh, Steve, would you like to start?
Sure, why not? And I'm, who negotiated this contract with the group? Do we know? Who did that? Who from the city was our representative?
Um, we had, we worked with the city attorney, Pat Dongan, and Jesse Bobbitt, who's no longer with the city.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, we didn't negotiate the contract. We reviewed the contract.
Okay, got you. And here's, here's my question. The the contract we have, I I don't, we've got this twenty-five thousand dollar payment that the city gets. How, why is that a good number? Who who signed off and said, yep, that's a good number for what we're getting? Who did that?
I was sent back and in, uh, when the original contract was signed.
No, 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 that this is a contract. This contract says we're going to start off and get twenty-five thousand, twenty-five thousand dollars. Who said that's a good number? I just want to know who signed off and said, yep, that look, that makes sense to me.
I believe we just were going off the previous contract with ended at twenty-five thousand dollars and continuing.
And and Kristen, I'm not, you, you were not, I, I'm not you were not part of this, so I understand that. But here's my, the contract says that we're allowed to get the the finance. Steve McClary, you got it in it, you've signed off on this, this staff report. How do we get to the twenty-five grand?
Well, thank you, council member, and you you raise a very fundamental point that was very critical to myself as I reviewed this report. Well, thank you, council member, and uh you you raise a very fundamental point that was very critical to myself as I reviewed this report. Uh, because the original recommendation that was coming to council was was simply to approve the agreement. And I felt that we were getting out in front of the council with that, um which is why I put in the uh alternate in the recommendation. Uh, because we do not have any direction from council at this point in terms of what the council would like to see, or or even if they would like to continue the agreement or what the terms would be. Um, and that's why I put that alternate in there, uh which is something that the council could consider. Uh, because we haven't had that opportunity to really have that discussion from council and get their direction. And I think that would probably be a more appropriate way to go, uh than simply entering into a new agreement at this point.
Yeah, look, I'm not opposed, you know, and I, the concept of providing funds for the hospital, I got no problem with that. The thing that I do have a problem with, our contract with this organization allows us to look at their financials and make sure that the numbers that we're looking at make sense, all right? Uh, and as far as I can tell, we have never asked to see any financials. So I, I mean, this is, you know, we don't know, we don't know whether they're, we don't know anything, all right? Uh, and to me, there's, you know, there's a failure there, because I don't know how you come up with the you know, in prior years, we were getting increases, a yearly increases of ten or eleven or twelve percent, and all of a sudden it's down to five percent, I don't know why that is. I mean, I assume these folks are making more money every year with either the the way they're running their operation, or if they're not, they're not gonna be doing it very long. But I just think we've gotta get a little smarter in terms of how we look at this stuff, and make sure that we're getting a benefit for this residents of Malibu if we're gonna hold this event, and I don't disagree, I mean, you know, the the you know, I'd love to find a way to deal with the issues Bill Sampson raised about uh you know, cutting off access to the road, I don't think we're gonna do that, I think that the, there is a a trade-off in terms of the benefit going to the hospital, but I'd just like to see some financials from somebody that says we actually know what the hell we're talking about. So, Paul, back to you.
Um, Bruce is up next.
Uh, do you wanna find out what Mister Lindner wants to ask or say, or should we just?
Sure, I'd love to hear what Mister Lindner wants to say.
But I, it's all right, it's Brennan here, I I can wait until all the questions.
Brennan, now.
Oh, yes, just, yes, Steve, your mention is.
More, I promise.
Yeah, I'm I'm sure, um, but the financials are always available to be reviewed, I think the previous contract, you know, had that in there as well, and it's in this. And then to tell you the truth is, we really duplicated what the current contract was with the increases, there was no intention to reduce, you know, the percentage, you know, increase.
You did reduce the percentage increases, that's what happened in this contract.
Yep. Uh, my apologies, I thought it was the same as we had before, so my apologies, thank.
It's not, I I went back and looked at the prior years, and that's not what, I'm just, look, I just think as as a city, if we're gonna sign these kind of contracts, we should be looking at the financials, that, I mean, you know, that's part of the the decision process or the information you need to make a good decision, that's my whole point.
Yeah, agreed, no, yeah, I I will not argue at all on that, because I I think it's within your right, and it makes total sense, so yes.
All right, Bruce.
So, all right, so so first of all, let's let's clear this issue out of the way that Bill Sampson raised, which is that he says he looked up Super League Triathlon Inc. and couldn't couldn't find it. So, um, what what and what state is this entity incorporated in? This, in fact, the corp- the contract doesn't say, it's really weird to me, most contract, almost every contract I've ever seen before, I gotta say, starts off by saying so-and-so Inc., a corporation organized under the law of the state of XYZ or country, whatever. This doesn't say anything, what 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 entity is this?
Uh, Delaware is the state of incorporation.
It's a Delaware corporation, okay, so I assume the city could get a copy of certificate of good standing for that. That that should be, that should be no issue, okay. The the um question of the, the the question Steve is asking about um was this negotiated, which it obviously, it sounds like it wasn't in terms of the the what we're getting paid to allow to you, to allow Malibu to be used for this. Um, the financials, I I appreciate that they're available to be seen, you know, I think it it should matter what we're be, to what we're being paid, how much is being made. Um, the money that's going to the hospital, I'm assuming that's that's from people that um that 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 pay for the people that are running, right, that's like sponsorship money, is that is that where that's coming from, that's not coming from the actual um fees paid for the race, am I right about that?
Yeah, you're correct, the the way that it does work is that in tradition, this really goes for most events, is that the registration fees typically are able to pay for the event itself. And then we encourage, you know, participants to do the peer-to-peer fundraising, such as Max, you know, she just mentioned on there who won a bike, and I think he was our top fundraiser there, but that's the way the model works.
Right, I get that, so the money that goes to the hospitals is is sponsorship for for the runners, for the participants, um, what do you make on this? You know, what what do you, what do you, at the end of the, at the end of the day, what do you get out of having sponsor, of having this race in Malibu in a given year?
What what do we make financially, what do we make, as in, I'd say, feel good, but I'm sure you're speaking to the former, correct?
Yeah, financially, yes.
Yeah, but yeah, fi- financially, and you know, and I'll let Michael speak to this further, but you know, in all honesty, that the event is not you know, operating in the black as of yet, that's the reason really for seeking a long-term agreement on that, you know, in previous years with much larger sponsorship dollars before the pandemic, the event was able to operate in that, and this can again be shown, you know, really in the financials, because it, you know, it means nothing when I say it, but when you review it. But you know, the end goal is to actually generate, of course, a profit to this and increase fundraising with CHLA.
Okay, um, so my my overarching issue is, I I've said this about other things, it's a question of what do we want Malibu to be? Um, you know, there there are, there are some cities that that thrive on events, that, you know, the more things they can bring in and the more entertainment, the more events they can bring, the more tourists they can bring, the happier they are, because that's their model, that's what they're there for. There are other towns where if somebody ventures off the roadway and comes and asks a question of somebody, they're like, what are you doing in, what are you doing here, I don't wanna be disturbed. I just like my quiet place, we obviously, I know, have to deal with sixteen million tourists. But the question is, you know, do our residents want to bring in more people, do they want to have events in Malibu that that are attractions, or do they not? And and I gotta say, I I don't really don't know the answer to that question, I, the people I hear from say they don't want this kind of thing, but maybe I'm just not hearing from a large number of people who do. I think that's something that we need to figure out as a town, I mean, it doesn't seem to be consistent with the vision statement and mission statement, although I understand that there's the tourist-serving part of it. Um, so what I'm gonna say is, Trevor, can you confirm to me, I, when I read the contract, it's six point eight to me was pretty clear, but I just wanna get a confirmation, it's a five-year contract, but it's terminable at any time on sixty days' notice for for no cause, is that correct? You're muted.
That's my recollection, I'm double checking right here, if if it's incorrect, I'll, I will pipe up.
Okay, so so I read this to, e- even though we're talking about a five-year contract, we're really talking about the next event, and maybe even not that, because if sixty days before the next event, the city were to choose to terminate the contract for no reason at all, other than it feels like terminating the contract, it can do that. And because, I've said this before of other contracts, because of that, and because I don't know enough about what our residents really want, I'm not inclined to take it away when we could always do that after we sign it, whereas if we don't sign it, we are taking it away. Although I like Steve's idea, Steve McCarry, McClary's idea of forming a committee to actually figure it out, and and maybe more broadly, figure out what this city wants in general, not just with respect to this event. Um, last question I, last point I have to raise is, um if I understood correctly, we're only allowed to have two events of this nature per year, is that, is that right?
Yeah. So, the policy.
Okay, right, and the the other one, which we heard about earlier, which sounds, which sounds like it is a Malibu event, I mean, it was, it's it got a lot of Malibu participants, we got students participating, that's kind of a local community event, even though it also welcomes others. This isn't that type, and I I question, what are we giving up by doing this, what other thing could we be doing that we're not even looking at, or nobody's bringing to us because we have our two events already taken up? I think that's something else from a policy standpoint we need to be thinking about, it's like, yeah, this has been here year after year, but is there something that's more beneficial to our residents that could be in place of this as the second event of this nature that we can have? Um, so those are my thoughts, I'm not in a, I'm not gonna make a motion of any sort, I'm not really even sure where I'm gonna come out on this yet, but those are my thoughts on this, this concept, this issue.
Thank you, Bruce. I thank Karen, there you are.
Thanks, Paul, thank you, I would like to make a motion, I would like to move to appoint an ad hoc committee consisting of no more than two council members and staff to review the city's road race policy and the proposed agreement in return to the city council with a recommendation. Along with that, I would like to recommend that that ad hoc committee be decided after uh the new council is sworn in.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion in a second.
So that would, that would, if I delete, uh, continue the item um with the uh and and instead of bringing back an item for approval of the contract, it would be for the determination of the ad hoc committee at a, at a future meeting with the new council, is that correct?
Yes, thank you.
Can I just make a friendly amendment to that?
You can try.
Motion, okay, I would like to also suggest that we start getting, go back and we ask for financials uh for the last couple of years, so when this ad hoc committee gets put together, they've got some materials in front of them, they can deal with in terms of understanding what the impacts of this event are. So, let's, that's actually last two years financials.
I I have a comment on that, is this organization a five oh one C three? Anyone?
It's a for-profit organization.
Right.
This is not intentionally a charity.
It's not a charity at all, it's a for-profit entity.
Okay, thank you, okay, well, my motion, um the amendment, yeah, Steve, wha- what are you happy with, five years?
I'll take five years with the financial, sure, that's good.
I'll accept that.
And so the 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 friendly amendment is to uh re- request that the um that that they provide these, that they they gather this information so it can be provided to the ad hoc committee.
Correct.
Okay. And it was that accepted by the second as well?
Yeah, I'll accept it, I mean, I think it's a given that the ad hoc committee is gonna be looking at that and a lot of other stuff.
Yeah. Mikey, you had your hand raised, did you wanna make a comment?
I think, I think Karen nailed it, um, that's where I was going, I uh you know, it's a big event, it's the most impact event, I believe, in the city of Malibu does really good things, it brings up a giant, you know, sort of, where are we going, and I think looking at this makes sense. Um, so yeah, basically, I just completely agree with where the motion's gone already, so, thanks.
I too agree with where the motion is going, and I would, if I were representing the the promoters of the event, I would be calling someone in the event to ask why the city of Malibu hadn't already received their check for the two thousand twenty-two event before coming to us with this. Uh, doesn't make a whole lot of sense, and the other thing, I'm sure that the ad hoc will figure out a a reasonable way to progress the uh, the annual payments. So, are we prepared to take a vote, or should I have Mister Lindner make another comment?
Let's vote.
Take a vote.
Okay. Kelsey, we take the roll.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Protim Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Yurin?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
And Steve, Steve, thank you for, Steve McClary, thank you for offering that as an option, it was good that, that helped.
Uh, I would like to take a very short uh break and then come back here to tackle five C and five D. If uh if I can
Six.
So let's uh, let's
He means six, I hope, and then seven A probably too.
Yeah, okay, that too, okay, let's go.
Sort of time warp or something.
On six Z, there's three more sixes.
All right, I'll meet you back here at nine four, at nine twenty-four.
Got it.
Hey, Paul. Hey. We still have a few minutes to go. Hey. And wait for two more people, but it is nine twenty-four. Okay, we're back. And we are now at item six C. And do we have a staff report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um. Just wanted to, uh, quick, briefly introduce the item again. This, this item is, uh, uh. For a letter of support for Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, uh, for a property acquisition. Uh, the recommended action was to consider directing the mayor to send a letter. Uh, to the city's current and incoming state representatives in the California Wildlife Conservation Board in support of this. Uh, acquiring properties currently available in three locations throughout Malibu and the adjacent Los Angeles County unincorporated area for the. Purposes of conservation. Uh, I would just like to state that while, um, while as your city manager, while I still believe that acquisition of these. Uh, properties certainly, um, for the purpose of preservation is certainly, uh, in alignment with the city's goals. Uh, based on the number of concerns that we've heard with this proposal, I am disinclined to, uh, support the recommendation at this time. Uh, staff is per here and we can give a more detailed report on this matter. And I also know that you do have a number of public speakers here tonight, uh, so certainly don't want to steal their thunder. I suspect the council would probably still like to hear from them as well. Uh, but I just want to let you know that that's my position on this at this point. Um, again, we, when it first came to the city, uh, it seemed like a very attractive proposition to be able to. Pull these properties out and secure them for long-term preservation. Uh, but again, we've heard a number of concerns with that current proposal. Um, and so we're happy, if you would like, I can have, uh, Ms. Shabelson, uh, give a for further detailed report. Um, or however you would like us to proceed at this point, Mr. Mayor.
I would think, although I see hands raised, I think that we ought to hear the public comment. Before we do anything else.
Be, before you do that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
It, it's a question for, it's a question for Steve McClary and for Trevor. I mean, does this mean that the items being pulled by the city manager? Or does this mean that the city manager is simply no longer recommending the action?
I'm no longer recommending the action and, and happy to let the city attorney speak as well.
No, that, you, you know, that, if I, you're pulling the item, then we would just, it would have been a request to continue the item when the agenda was approved.
Okay, thank you.
Mikey, did you have a question as well?
Yeah, just clarifying. I, I was wondering how this item got on the agenda. It's, it's a very different item to come under six. And so I was just, I didn't know how this got here. I just, I. Four years and it's just a different, feels different. Like, how did this one end up making the agenda? Somebody, I mean, obviously a city council didn't bring it forward because it's not under seven.
So it, it came out of, uh, initially, the city received, um, some letters and we were contacted by some individuals that, that made us aware of this. Uh, we had some discussions, um, with the, uh, with our representatives with California Strategies. Um, which included, um, uh, Mayor Crisante and Mayor Pretend Silverstein. Um, at that point, I felt that there was sufficient, uh, direction and momentum to bring this forward. Uh, again, we were really seeing it as an opportunity. Um, you know, it was originally presented to us as that the state was looking to acquire these properties. Uh, and that was what our, what our interest was in trying to bring it forward, uh, to, to promote that preservation. So that's, 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 that's the simple answer. Uh, there's, there's nothing more to it than that.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate you clarifying.
Karen, did you have a question as well?
Uh, actually, I, I guess it's been answered. I had the same question as Mikey. When I first saw it, I thought this seems like a. This seems like it would be in the sevens. Um, as a council member item. Uh, I, yeah, I also, I couldn't figure out how we ended up with it, but I guess let's hear a public comment and move ahead. Thank you.
It is appropriate for the city manager to, to, to put this on the, the agenda to make, I think he wanted to make sure that the council had a chance to, to come in on it, even if the. As an individual council member didn't want to add it to the agenda.
Mr. Yurin? You're muted, sir.
All of the, just one question. All of these properties are owned by the Edge. Is that correct? These are all Edge properties that we're talking about here.
Correct.
Okay, all the, you know, thank you very much.
Okay. What members of the public have asked to speak on this?
You have twenty-one speakers for this item. The first few are Jeff Bullard, Debbie Weiss, M. Devin Semler, and Robert Weingarten. We'll hear from Jeff Bullard first.
Welcome, Jeff. Are you available, Jeff?
Jackie.
Oh, yes. Yeah, there we go. Can you hear? Okay, uh, well, that was a surprising, uh, change, uh, all of a sudden here that we've. Sat and waited for three hours to speak on. I appreciate what you, what you said, uh, Mr. City Manager, but it's, uh. It's somewhat frustrating. This whole thing has been very frustrating. My, my family and I live on Palm Canyon Lane in the Sarah Canyon. Neighborhood often referred to as Sarah Retreat. We've lived in Malibu over thirty years and I've served on the Board of Directors of Sarah Canyon Property Owners Association for over fifteen of those thirty years. We're very familiar with the risks associated with living in close proximity to the mountain wildlands. And have experienced close calls with fires and floods over the years. A week ago, a neighbor alerted me to this agenda item. Following a board meeting last Wednesday, the board, we circulated the notice to our membership. The concerns about the potential impact of the proposed MRCA Sweetwater Acquisition are common, if not universal, in our community. Frankly, everyone was stunned that they had not been approached or made aware of this acquisition proposal, let alone a staff recommendation. For a letter of support. Why is this and how does such a proposal escape reasonable notice to the neighborhoods affected? We've been told that this is due to it not being an actionable item. Isn't a request for a letter of support an actionable item? The potential impact on the safety of our community or neighborhood. Includes, but it's certainly not limited to, the intersection of Pacific Coast Highway and Sarah Road entrance and exit. The private easement access management, property security, liability, and certainly last, but not by far the least. Is the severe fire risks. They're obvious. I and many members of the Sarah neighborhood urge the city council to postpone any action. Well, I guess I don't have to urge you to do that anymore. You're not asked to do the action now. Uh, until each neighborhood could be individually, uh, individually contacted and gathered and gotten input from. I am stunned. That this thing is on the agenda at all. Just ask Ken Curzley and Barbara. What their experience has been with the MRCA and similar kinds of acquisitions. This is really unbelievable. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Debbie Weiss, followed by M. Devin Semler, Robert Weingarten, and Marnie Cammons.
Hey Debbie, are you available?
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Hi, good evening, Mayor and City Council members. My name is Debbie Weiss and I own the property right beneath the Edge property in Sarah Retreat. The Sweetwater Mesa Road residents have strong concerns about this item and I echo everything that Jeff said right before me. Twenty-one of them signed a letter requesting you do not send a letter of support and receive that letter earlier today. It is also of grave concern to my family that the images supplied to you in this staff report from the M, the SMMC are misleading. They fail to indicate the private easement on my property that leads to the Edge property. And to the best of my knowledge, this is the only current link between Sweetwater Mesa and the access road through the parkland to Edge's land above. I wouldn't blame you if you looked at this. All you look at the images, it shows a bunch of trees. It doesn't show my house right there, right below the image where they cut it off. It doesn't indicate our easement. You know, I, I understand that. I would also like it noted that no one ever contacted me from the MCRA, the city or otherwise about this agenda item. Or visited my property to find out what was going on. Um, I don't know if this is moot now, but I was going to ask that you don't sign the letter of recommendation. And I had some respectful requests to make. One, um, a thorough analysis of the potential impacts of the sale to the MRCA are conducted. Staff and the city council members tour the properties. I'd be happy to show you where all these things are in real life. Notice given to all of the potentially affected neighbors in our property and, in our area and also the other ones. Our biggest concerns is whether the MRCA would seek to obtain public access to the land through Sarah Retreat. Which would bring up all sorts of safety concerns for both the public and the residents. And I'm available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you, Debbie.
Our next speaker would be M. Devin Semler, but I don't see them in the meeting, so we'll see if we can circle back to them and we'll hear from Robert, Robert Weingarten next, followed by Marnie Cammons and Jeremy Fink.
Mr. Weingarten, are you available?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
All right, good evening, everybody. Uh, I learned about, I'm a homeowner on Sweetwater Mesa Road. I've been there for twenty-six years. I heard about this at a board meeting with Jeff Fuller the other day. I was appalled, I must say, to find out about it in that manner. Uh, I'm also appalled that even at the idea, uh, that the staff would recommend a support letter. Um, from the city for a transaction. That is first of all, outside of Malibu, as I understood it. For a good number of years, the Edge property was LA property. And Edge was trying to get an easement down to. Sweetwater Mesa to make it Malibu property. So he bought landlocked property in, in Los Angeles and tried to create. An easement through our community to make it Malibu property. Uh, it's. Been obvious to us for years that any activity up there, forgetting parkland activity. But any activity up there would increase fire risk. High traffic in a, you know, on a very narrow road would increase crime risk. There would be increased cost in the maintenance of the road. I don't know who absorbs that. There'd be increased liability. I don't know if. Malibu City is looking for increased liability. And as, as far as I know, your policy number fifteen. States that the staff shall discuss how the recommended action impacts the general welfare of the community. Well, here's an action that's being recommended that has nothing to do with the community. It's a transaction outside the community and. The community is dilatarily affected. So I don't understand how this came about in the first place. Uh, my hope would be not only that you not send a support letter, but that when you complete your review of it. That's the responsibility of Malibu to protect the welfare of your citizens. And that would lead you to stand firmly against anything happening up there that would affect the residents of Malibu. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I'm seeing a raised hand from an iPad. I think that might be the speaker we missed, M. Devin Semler, so I'll see if they're available to speak.
Okay.
Yes, I apologize. This is Devin Semler and I thank you for noticing me as iPad seven. Uh, I am chiming in to reiterate what Debbie Weiss had just said. In the sense that this is an unfathomable, uh, potential disaster that, uh, the city council is discussing right now and I'm. Uh, speaking to urge you to strongly, uh, vote against any such letter or even allow such an acquisition of these lands to take place. Uh, I am a resident of Sweetwater Mesa. I own lot four. Uh, directly adjacent to Debbie Weiss and beneath the Edge's property, the property in question. And can tell you firsthand experiences of people climbing up either from the Pacific Coast Highway onto our properties. Uh, drinking, doing drugs and, uh, quite honestly, in July of twenty fourteen, I found a homeless person living up there. Who subsequently died that same afternoon. I called the police. And in July of two thousand fourteen, I had a homeless drug overdose on my property. Uh, in Sweetwater Mesa. So I can't imagine what would happen if this became public land or parkland or accessible to the general public. And I'm urging you to strongly not support this, uh, as it will be devastating to the community of Sarah and in my opinion, in Malibu in general. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Devin.
I don't see our next two speakers, Marnie Cammons or Jeremy Fink, so we'll try to circle back to them and we'll hear from E. Barry Haldeman next, followed by Joe. Uh, Joanne Van Tilburg, Jonathan Kay, Joe Drummond, and Howard Redski.
Barry, are you available?
I am. Thank you. Um.
I am. Thank you. Um, uh, everybody's been talking about Sarah Retreat and, and Carbon Canyon, but there's a whole big swath of property that's up Lattigo Canyon and Dan Blocker State Beach that, uh, is also part of this purchase. Um, it is a tremendous fire hazard. Um, we have, we have fought off fires, and the last time Woolsey had jumped the highway, and it was local residents who fought off the fires and saved twenty-nine homes without the fire department anyplace. Um, I also agree that we absolutely need to have knowledge of what's going on, and I would recommend strongly that the, uh, city council appoint an ad hoc committee to look into this transaction, and also to have somebody at every one of these meetings, so we know what's going on, and there's a mechanism to get that information out to the city. Um, we know really very little else about this thing. Look, it is a, a, a positive idea to have open space, and I can see why, uh, Steve McClery saw that as a good thing. But the problem with the MRCA is the problem we're seeing on Ramirez, the problem we're seeing at Bluffs Park. He's not gonna keep it open. He's gonna have yurts and, and so-called flameless fires and amphitheaters and all kinds of stuff and create a much bigger hazard. So what I recommend is that the city of Malibu take a look at going back to the granting agency who's gonna give him the grant he's trying to get, and see if we can't get the grant so that we buy the property, put restrictions on it, deed restrictions and whatever else restrictions we have so that we control that property. He, he's getting a grant from, or give it to the, to state parks, but we can't leave it with, um, with the MRCA. We've just had too many bad experiences with them, and, um, they just don't take care of the property. A good example is they have an access way on, on Lattigo Beach that, uh, uh, they said would be closed at dusk, open at dawn. Uh, there's no gate on it. Um, and it went into disrepair so that some of the residents had to actually repair it, so people wouldn't kill themselves getting down to Dan Blocker State Beach. So, number one, no letter. I agree. Set up a task force. Let's find out what's going on, and let's look into us getting that property with a grant from that with the promise that we will keep it as open space and, uh, put deed restrictions on it so that that will, uh, allow that to continue for the rest of our lives here in Malibu. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry.
Our next speaker is Joanne Van Tilburg, followed by Jonathan Kay, Joe Drummond, Howard Redsky, and Terry Davis.
Hi, Joanne, are you available?
Yes, I am. I, am I audible?
You are audible.
Good, thank you. The first thing I would like to say is that I agree with all of my friends and neighbors who have spoken out in, in, really in indignation about how we have sat here, waited to be heard, and then have this entire thing withdrawn from our attention, and prior to that, not having it been brought properly to our attention. I speak to you as a forty-seven-year resident on Sweetwater Mesa with my family in a home we built that long ago, believe it or not. Um, and, but also as a professional archaeologist and as a two-term appointed member of the advisory committee to the National Landmarks Commission. And in that capacity, I work closely with the National Park Service and the State of California Park Service. I urge you to understand and to begin to contemplate the fact that what we are seeing is a kind of takeover of public lands by an organization that purports to be functioning in the best interests of both conservation and good recreation. But in fact, this organization has had an adversarial position throughout its existence in Malibu with the entire community, with individuals in their homes, but also with homeowners associations and groups of property owners. So they, these folks have not been good neighbors to any of us. And it doesn't seem to me that I see any signals that they will be good neighbors. I would also like to point out to you that I'm shocked at the lack of institutional memory in the city council. And that is that, as others have pointed out, the edge property is not in the city of Malibu boundary. It is in the city of Los Angeles or, and/or the county of Los Angeles. And in fact, all of the hearings, which I personally attended, through the earlier, um, application for the building of five houses on this property by the edge, that that, those, that, those applications were actually, that application was actually denied by the Coastal Commission based on many, many variables, one of which was the fact that the state and federal um, conservation and wildlife preservation authorities did not feel that this group was ha, had as its best interest, the, um, preservation and conservation of wildlife. And since we are on the edge, edge of that wildlife of preserve, I think it's really crucial that if these public lands, um, or private lands come into public hands through the city council or any other group that represents Malibu, that, that there be proper attention paid to maintaining the environment of the animals that are our good neighbors. So I was hoping to urge you to decline sending this letter. Now that I don't have to do that, I would thank you for do nothing further positive on this appeal. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I don't see our next speaker, Jonathan Kay, in the meeting, so we'll see if we can circle back to him, and we'll hear from Joe Drummond next, followed by Howard Redsky, Terry Davis, and Bill Sampson.
Joe, are you available?
Yes, thank you. So as we know, the MRCA will only try and open up access to these properties and put more people and tourists who don't care about our city's conservation or fire safety and will put it at risk. The MRCA have, has never, as we know, taken care of their properties. We have hills in Big Rock under MRCA-owned mountains that they never do fire breaks or any brush clearance, and our board pays for this every year. We know there is a piece of land at the bottom of Big Rock and PCH that was purchased by a resident as a view corridor when they developed another property that must have impacted ocean views. So this land was gifted to the MRCA in a supposed agreement that they, at the very least, keep it clear at Vista Point along PCH for views, let alone fire. They have cleared it once, and now recently their council has refused to clear the property and have explained that it's not, it's their policy not to be responsible for brush clearance or fire safety, and it's the adjacent owners that should be responsible. In their letter to us, they said, "Under state law, brush clearance is a responsibility of the property owner whose property falls adjacent to parklands and preserved open space. MRCA will not be held responsible and is protected by state law which supersedes local law. Per the sections, it is the obligation of the property owner to comply with weed abatement regulations on protected parklands annually." So they're just gonna be bringing more people in, yet let it grow and grow out of control, and it can catch in a second and cause a huge wildfire. Um, I think what we need is, it shouldn't be glossed over. Any properties gifted or sold anywhere to the MRCA must have strict no development to protect wildlife, et cetera, and brush clearance requirements placed on them as they have not been taking care of, of all the free land they're getting. And so if, um, so that's it, basically. I mean, they, they just cannot be allowed to, um, take over all this land when they don't take care of it, and they, they let all the tourists in. Thanks.
Thank you, Joe.
Our next speaker is Howard Redsky, followed by Terry Davis, Bill Sampson, and Doug Stewart.
Hi, Howard, are you available?
I am. I agree with everything everyone said before, and I think that we're owed an apology and just please never do this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
I don't see Terry Davis or Bill Sampson in the meeting, but we'll try to circle back to both of them, and next we'll hear from Doug Stewart, followed by Dee Menzies, Marissa Coughlin, and Pat Healy.
Hi, Doug, are you available?
I am here, yes. Well, first off, uh, my request is we don't issue a letter of support. So I think that's taken care of by the conversation already. But I wanted to take a, maybe a little different tact on this and say, this is an opportunity to bring rural land that's in or near Malibu into a forever protective status. And I think this is too great of a, of a matter to hurry or not take advantage of. We're, while we all know the reputation of MRCA for not maintaining its holdings, they're often referred to as a terrible neighbor. These two parcels are actually adjacent to entry, entities that are better neighbors. We've got state parks for the Carbon Mesa property and the national parks for the Lattigo property. Since MRCA is really just a pass-through entity that's applying for a grant to buy this land, let's stipulate that they immediately turn this land over to state parks and the national parks. Furthermore, we should at the same time request the zoning be moved to public open space versus what I believe is the current residential, uh, twenty and residential, uh, rural forty, along with deed restrictions to maintain it forever as open space with minimal usage and other constraints to keep it from being turned into just another Disneyland, uh, of the MRCA. As an alternate, if either or both of the park agencies decline to accept the land, then let's research the merits of the city of Malibu being a recipient from the MRCA to hold the land in the manner, in the same manner as a diligent park agency would be. Or Malibu might apply directly to the Wildlife Conservation Board to acquire the land instead of the MRCA to give, uh, the park agencies, so we can give it to the park agencies or hold it ourselves. I think this is an opportunity to use, for the council to use this as a beginning of a prototype on how we might protect this and other existing privately owned rural land in Malibu and protect our residents from having it be abused by someone like the MRCA. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
Our next speaker is Dee Menzies, followed by Marissa Coughlin, Pat Healy, Mary Ann Riggins, and Gary Hoffman.
Hi Dee, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, and good evening, Mayor Grisanti and council members. My family acquired our property in Sarah Canyon in nineteen fifty-seven. We are now on the third generation of family members enjoying our horses, pets, and two-legged friends in Sarah Canyon. Intimately knowing the roads and trails of the canyon and surrounding countryside and mountains, I realize how fragile the roads and the byways are, and I know that they are not able to support the traffic both on foot and by vehicle that will occur if MRCA purchases and converts the surrounding area. The roads are unable to carry fire equipment that would be necessary to respond to an emergency or a fire in that area. Every day, children and adults walk, ride their horses, walk their dogs, donkeys, and goats on our roads. And we ask you to please consider the safety of the Sarah Canyon residents. Please do not encourage MRCA to purchase the property adjacent to Sarah Canyon. It can do nothing but bring danger and harm to the longtime residents of Sarah Canyon. And thank you for considering really strongly thinking about what Malibu really is and what everything you've heard people say about keeping it beautiful and pristine and allowing people that live there to enjoy the hiking, the riding, and enjoy the, the canyons and what Malibu truly represents. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Marissa Coughlin, followed by Pat Healy, Mary Ann Riggins, Gary Hoffman, and Mark Kessler.
Hi, Marissa, are you available?
Yes, I am. How are you tonight? I'm sorry, I cut you off.
We're delighted to have you.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, let me just thank, uh, Mikey and Karen for their dedicated service to our community and the support and love from their families for the efforts they put in on our behalf. I want to thank them very much. Um, we all know in this community that the MRCA commit, uh, created in eighty-five after the seventy-nine conservancy creation has never been a good neighbor to Malibu. Um, Joanne Van Tilburg, a renowned archaeologist internationally, uh, and I moved into this town. I just have a couple of years on her, but she knows full well. Everything she said, I totally agree with. Um, I think it's time for the, our community to put our big boy pants on and not only stand up to the MRCA, but their underlying micromanagement with the Coastal Commission. What they do is they, they're, uh, like developers or property flippers. They acquire property, then Joe flips it to something else to get another property, and then it's sold off. I don't know if you people are aware of that happening. Uh, Tem, Temesco Canyon has never been maintained. Corral Canyon is where the fire started. Uh, 'cause they, they didn't brush, MRCA didn't brush clear. Carbon Beach fencing, it, it's just not a good situation. The representation in the staff report that he provided is deceptive as well. Another lady mentioned that. It doesn't clearly show access. He never explains easements, access, or anything else. Then he tries to get behind our back and get trails in when our LCP is, uh, does not allow for trails. And he tries to bring it in from another jurisdiction, the county area, through this. Um, it's, I think it's important that we also have, uh, an intrusion, know that we, there's intrusion into residential development uh, that's existing, and there's a danger to many of the, um, homes there based on the fact that it's just like a, a thirst for acquisition, but not, but not an adult in the room managing anything. It's like a kid at Halloween that wants all the candy and then eats it all and wa, and winds up being ill. That's what this agency sadly does, and I really don't approve that they go behind uh, our community's back to fight, to use the Coastal Commission as a wedge against us. We have a certified LCP. We're our own legal entity. We have our rights and jurisdictions as well, and I think we really need to support that. They are not good neighbors. Uh, they get all the other agencies involved to, to fight us in any way we can. Lattigo Shore was mentioned, Solstice Canyon, Old Roberts Ranch, uh, many other things. So I really encourage this not to take place. Have our Parks and Rec Commission and our Parks and Rec Department look at anything that wants to be acquired in our community and bring it to the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa.
Our next speaker is Pat Healy, followed by Mary Ann Riggins, Gary Hoffman, Mark Kessler, and John Gray.
Hi, Pat, are you available?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Paul. Um, I'd like to say that I've been in conversations with the MRCA about these three parcels, and that they had told me that they were, they are willing to turn the property over to the National Park Service. These three, uh, parcels are contiguous to NPS, uh, holdings already in the area. Um, and they're very good stewards of the property, and I'm sure that they would, um, understand, um, our concerns and put, uh, proper restrictions on the property. So I, uh, concur with everybody else that the, um, that this item should be continued, and that we should get a letter from MRCA saying that if they acquire the land, they would transfer it to the National Park Service, and then get a letter from the National Park Service saying that they'll accept these properties as permanent open space. And if the, and if the residents of Malibu still have concerns, I'm sure they would address them uh, because they're very good stewards of the land. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Riggins, followed by Gary Hoffman, Mark Kessler, and John Gray.
Hi, Mary Ann, are you available?
Uh, yes, thank you. I, I just wanted to concur with all the other speakers, um, like them. When I saw this come on, I was a little shocked uh, given the, um, position of the city with regards to Bluffs Park and Ramirez Canyon proposal that, uh, we would be looking to, uh, support MRCA with acquisition of more land uh, that could be in turn used to create new areas and put our residents at risk. Um, I would encourage you to table this and, um, even consider writing a letter or creating, um, a thing within our own community that we look at acquiring these properties so that we can have control over them. I think the, the grant writing proposal is an excellent idea that we should be looking at in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary Ann.
Our next speaker is Gary Hoffman, followed by Mark Kessler and John Gray.
Hi, Gary, are you available?
Gary, you should see a pop-up asking.
There we go. Yeah, can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Great. Um, you know, as most of you said, you were kind of mystified about how this came about in the first place. We don't really have an answer to that yet, and I think we should really get one. But I was also mystified that somebody in the city would refer to the MRCA in this suggested letter as a conservation organization consistent with the vision of Malibu. The MRCA is the biggest land developer in the Santa Monica Mountains. They don't preserve or conserve. They basically develop and destroy.
They don't preserve or conserve, they basically develop and destroy. As all of you know, you know, they sprayed Roundup up in Porco Canyon to destroy Escha. In, in preparation for certain kinds of things. This was documented by a former city council person. They've illegally widened their trails up at Porco Canyon, the road, under the guise of maintaining them. So for somebody to, and, and we're heading into a huge problem with them and a conflict with them in terms of what they're attempting to do at Bluffs Park. So how does somebody on staff refer to this as a conservation organization and a recommendation to support them? I think that the staff needs to have, perhaps they're new people, I don't know. But the staff needs to be educated in terms of some historical things that have, that have gone on in Malibu and that continue to be. I think, however, this is an opportunity, as others have suggested. Doug Stewart for one, Barry Haldeman for another. And conversations with some of the people on the city council to look to have this land either go to state parks. I, I, I don't think a letter is enough from the MRCA that would have to really be a contractual situation for them. If they're really saying they're going to give it to state parks, they violated various agreements in the past. And also just as a little sidebar. There's an ordinance that says if any of us wanted to develop some land that we owned. And we overdeveloped it by, let's say, cutting down some Escha, we could be fined eleven thousand dollars a day. This ordinance explicitly excludes the MRCA from any consequences for destroying Eschen. So this is not a conservation organization. You all know it, everybody who's spoken knows it. I just don't understand why the staff didn't know it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Gary.
Our next speaker is Mark Kessler, followed by John Gray.
Mark, are you available?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Grisanti. Thank you, City Council, for, for giving me a chance to speak. I am a homeowner on Palm Canyon Lane in Sarah Canyon. And I echo all the sentiments of my friends and neighbors. I have three young children and one more on the way, and I'm, I'm just sick about this whole thing. I don't like how it's been handled. Obviously, the, the, the city council should reject any sort of letter in support of what MRCA wants to do, but that's not enough. You need to, as another one of my neighbors said, set up some sort of ad hoc committee to look into this and and take some action to keep Malibu safe, keep, keep Malibu pristine and not let this happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Our next speaker is John Gray.
Mr. Gray, are you available?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can hear you now.
Thank you so kindly for having me. I, I'm, I very much appreciate the moments. I appreciate the support and I mirror the sentiments previously suggested. It's, I think it's important to note that Sarah Retreat is a gated community. If such, if such things could occur, we would have no method of using our gates. Anyone that drove up into the community would simply say, we're going to a park. And we would have no method of, of deterring anyone that wished to go. If anybody's been in and around a city or state park. You know, there's typically miles of traffic to get to a park. You have to basically hike to the trailhead of a park in any part of these areas. And Sarah Retreat is a fifteen mile an hour speed limit. About half of most any other community you ever walk into. We do have horses, we do have elderly people, we have children on bicycles. We are completely designed around the safety and security of walking and being in the, in Sarah. And the idea of, of any type of a park access would completely diminish the sanctity, security, safety of this area. And then not to mention what people actually feel about, about this organization and what their actual literal intentions are. So I would just like to appreciate the moment to, to be heard and to say with, with absolutely. It would be nice for the people of Sarah to look into acquiring that property or being involved in the grant writing or being involved in some form of ownership, some sort of deed in that property to non-use. But to absolutely being able to limit people from inadvertently or possibly coming into Sarah. Because our very, very small road system simply under no circumstances could ever afford it. It's, you know, we can barely afford to, to build the buildings that we build and improve the homes. Because it completely stops traffic. So if you actually had the use of a park coming through these very, very small lanes. It would be impossible. Mariposa Trail is the oldest road in Malibu. Now Mariposa del Oro, and it simply cannot afford any type of, any type of growth like this would allow. And I appreciate you being heard. Thank you. Thanks for listening to me.
Thank you, sir.
And Mayor, I am checking for the people we missed earlier, Marnie Cammons, Jeremy Fink, Jonathan Kay, Terry Davis, and Bill Sampson. But I don't see any of them in the meeting right now, so that concludes public comments.
Okay, that brings us back to the council. And I think Mikey has his hand raised, and I think we all know where we're going here. Mikey?
I think we know where we're going too. I just, this kind of reminds me of, right, when I was first on council. And staff put an item on to see if we wanted a homeless shelter at Zuma Beach of some sort. Mostly to know if it should be on the list they should look at. And of course, that went on off like the atom bomb this is. So yeah, that's, it's always a tricky issue. And that's why we're here. So we're here to sort these things out and I fully agree. My main question, I do have a question, is how much time do we have? Does anyone know the timing of them trying to get this grant or where it's at? Or are we up against a wall? I have no idea on that. So if anyone does, that's something we should consider. The second thing is I love the idea of somehow it goes to say state parks, so I think does a great job overall, or national parks to be just retired. I love that idea. I, if that's possible, that'd be game changing. I don't know how that could go. There's been some other things. When I was mayor, we tried to work on kind of along those lines. And you know what happened? Our state legislators were afraid of Joe. I'll leave it at that. Like, nothing happened. We got no help. So we have to figure another way to do it because apparently our legislators to this date have been a little bit afraid to help us tackle issues involving MRCA. So I know where this is going. I'll let people that are going to be on council make the motion. I think an ad hoc or something makes sense, but I'll let you guys make the motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Mikey. Bruce?
Thanks, Paul. So it seems that the, I agree, we all, we all know where we're headed with this. The public speakers, and thank you all for your comments, kind of were in two groups. One, one was the group that are espousing all the potential dangers and evils of MRCA acquiring this property, which we all agree that they need to be avoided. And I don't believe Steve ever had any of that, Steve McClary in mind, intended any of that. I believe that he would have understood, we, we want to do this in a in a way that, in which the, the power of MRCA would be cabbined. And I don't think anybody intended that they would acquire it and keep it. But the other group of speakers had ideas about national parks, state parks, even Malibu. And, and that's what I want to talk about. Because actually, when I first heard about this opportunity, that's, that's where I was coming out and thinking about it. I, I learned of this from Pat Healy, who showed me the, the advertisement that the property was available. And my immediate, my first thought was, is there a way Malibu could acquire these properties and, and basically retire them as vacant property? One of the properties I understand is in Malibu. And, and to the extent that that could be accomplished, that would be great. I believe the other properties are not in Malibu. I don't know that legally Malibu can acquire property that's outside of Malibu. Maybe it can, maybe it can't. That's a question, I guess, for our council. But in any event, I think we're all in agreement. We don't want MRCA to own this property. Other than for the instantaneous moment that may be required as a way to get it into the hands of us, the state parks, or the, or the national parks. So the people who were talking about that were Barry Haldeman, Pat Healy, Gary Hoffman, Doug Stewart, and, and to some extent, Mary Ann. I agree, I agree with that. Barry suggested an ad hoc, but then I heard from someone else, maybe, I don't remember who it was, I apologize for not giving you credit. Parks and Rec, I mean, why create ad hocks if you don't have to create ad hocks? This seems to me to be the perfect thing for the Parks and Rec Department to be focused on. They know a lot about these issues. They probably be a good place to have heads put together and, and they may, they could work with members of the public such as Barry, Pat, Gary. Doug will be on council in all probability, and I suspect Mary Ann will be. I agree completely with Gary Hoffman. I had written this down myself beforehand. A letter would not be sufficient. I would not be supportive of anything other than contractual obligation to turn this, if MRCA were to touch it, to turn it over to the states, the national parks. Or us for that matter. So those are kind of all over the place. My comments, I will make a motion, which is that we defer any action on this. We ask, we delegate to the state, to our Parks and Recreation Commission, the responsibility of putting together an action plan and proposing it to us. And that they should invite participation by members of the public, maybe two or three members of the public who have the largest interest in seeing, in helping this be accomplished.
Hey, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I will second that, although I do have some reservations about putting this on the staff without any input from them. Thank you, Trevor. Yes?
Okay, I, I was gonna clarify here. So the idea is to put this onto the work plan for the Parks and Rec Commission.
That's my question, yeah.
Is that, is that the, the direction? And then you're asking for input from additional citizens. We wouldn't be able to put them on the question, you mean to have them come in and speak to the commission? Would that be correct?
Well, they, they, I suspect they could create an ad hoc if they wish to.
Here's your question again, Trevor. I didn't understand your question.
Okay, my, my, I was, what I was trying to clarify, what the motion was doing, the motion is putting this investigation and coming up with a, with, with, with a recommendation on the work plan for the Parks and Rec Commission. That is the direction that, that you are recommending, correct?
That's better stated, yes. That's what I'm recommending.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I, I will go ahead and second that.
Just to be clear, Trevor, if, if that happens, Parks and Rec can invite in any neighbors, any neighborhoods they want to to come and talk to them about what's going on, right?
Anybody can come in and speak at the, at the meeting with, with the, with, with the commission. You know, it'd be up to them to, to determine how to come up with the plan and how to investigate and who to speak to. But yes, anyone can come in. I want to clarify that they weren't being, we weren't appointing anyone new onto the commission, we were creating new members. It was to get more information from other people, have them come in and speak with the commission as they investigate and come up with a, a, a plan regarding these properties, correct? Okay.
Yes, correct.
I, I have to also ask, I'm curious too. What, does anybody know what the timing on this is?
I have a thought on that. I had heard a rumor first that that they were so pleased with the money they were able to get out through Joe a year ago. That they, that they were giving him three hundred million this year. Or, and then later I heard it was seven hundred million. And I don't know anybody else who's, can give me that, but that's, that's what I had heard. And with the object being that he's supposed to go out there and, and buy land as quickly as possible. Now, if he was also instructed at the same time, you have to immediately transfer it to the National Park Service or the State Park Service or somebody else, but you can't run it yourself. I, I think we wouldn't have a problem. We, our problem is that he's, he tends to want to hang on to stuff and, and we've had a lot of feedback that he doesn't operate in a way that makes the neighbors happy. And I see lots of hands here.
I, I didn't hear timing in there. Sorry, Paul.
It was in, it's supposed to be part of the state budget that was put together during the summer, I think. Please, Steve, I'm, I'm in deep water here.
Thank you. If I could ask Elizabeth Shabelson to, to step on, she could give some clarity on the timing from what she's from what she's been able to gather. Elizabeth?
Hello, yes. I was able to gather from the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy that, that the MRCA is putting together a packet for, to request funding from the Wildlife Conservation Board in a spring meeting. They meet quarterly, I guess, to distribute their grant funds, and that's a meeting in which they're, they're aiming to have their application ready.
So that seems to indicate we have some time. Karen?
I actually saw that as the exact opposite. I, this sounds like I won't be on the council, but I would think the future council wants to get to, to work on this as soon as possible in January. That's just my idea. Anyway.
Steve? Earring?
Yeah, thanks, Paul. Do we, well, I don't know, and I have not been able to find out what the status of the, the, the edges desire to build houses up on Sweetwater Mesa. And I know the Coastal Commission turned them down. But is that the final say that they have, or is he still have an option to do that? Don't know. I've heard different stories on that one too. So don't have an answer for that. It seems to me that the two organizations or the two groups that have, could have the biggest say in what happens or doesn't happen. One is going to be the edge, if he's selling the property, right? He can put conditions on what happens, who gets it, what conditions are going to be there. So I would think that having some conversation with him or his representatives would be, would be valuable. The second thing is the group that's granting the money, which is this California Wildlife Association. I don't know much about them, other than that, the fact that Fran Pavly's on that, on their board. But it seems to me that having conversations with them would be the second place to go, or, or the, you know, the, the first or second place to go. Because if we can convince them that there should be something done, we may be able to get them to put some conditions if there's any sale that takes place. So with that in place, I, you know, I don't have a problem trying to pass this off to the Parks and Recs Commission. But I think what we want to do is as soon as we get a new console in place, let's come back and revisit this thing very quickly. To decide if that is the group that's going to be able to give us the biggest push on this thing, or whether this should be something driven by the council. Because this is important. I mean, you know, the, the Joe Edmiston is not going to give up. All right, he's going to keep coming forward, you know, and, and if he gets, we're getting close to the point where we're going to change the name of this town from Malibu to Edmistonville. Edmistonville, or whatever the heck it is, because he's going to control enough property in here to do that. So the, the, the only other thing I would suggest in the short run, okay? Is that these neighborhoods, because whoever we talk to and try and convince that we shouldn't let Joe buy this thing or without some conditions, or we want to have this sold to somebody other than Joe. We should be able to present to those folks a story that says, here's why we have a problem with Joe. So I would suggest that all of these neighborhoods go out and take some videos or some pictures of the issues they have problems with Joe, whether it's the beaches that aren't being cleaned up or the property up on Point, I, I mean, the dig rocks aren't being cleared, or what, you know, the, the fact that he's suing folks in, in Sycamore Canyon. or what, you know, the, the fact that he's suing folks in, in Sycamore Canyon. I mean, we should come up with a story. So if we sit down with somebody, we can say, here's our experience with this guy, and here's why we're making this case. This isn't sort of something, you know, that's coming out of the blue. This is, there's evidence that this guy has been a bad neighbor in the past. And we just want to, what we're trying to do is make sure if you're going to do this thing as a conservation wildlife quarter, that we're going to be able to actually accomplish that when we're done. So with that, Paul, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay. I see Bruce's hand.
Yeah, well, based on Steve's comments, I, I, I wonder, Steve, would you prefer, instead of giving this over to Parks and Rec now, we deferred the decision on how to deal with this until the first or second meeting of the new council, or?
Yeah, you know, I, I think, I think I would, Bruce. You know, I, I've got to do a little more research in terms of what, you know, where all this stuff is. But I do think this is going to be, if, if this thing is going to be voted on in the spring, I think we're probably going to have January and February to put some program together to go up to the, whoever we're going to talk to, whether it's the edge or the, the people granting the funds and do something. And I just think we may be better off, we may be able to get focused and get something done a little, a little bit quicker with an ad hoc committee versus sticking in a Parks and Rec debt.
So would you want to create one now, or would you want to wait until we have a new council sitting?
Wait till we get a council, till we get a council seat. But I would like the neighborhoods to start putting together some materials that we can use. I think we've got to tell a story. And I think that story will be best told if we can, if we can demonstrate what Joe has done to the city in the past. I, I think that helps us get what we want, whether it's with the edge or with the groups granting the funds. So go out, take some videos, take some pictures, start corporate, putting that stuff together. When we get this ad hoc committee together, we can put all that together and hopefully present, use that as a presentation to somebody.
All right, so that, I'll, I'll withdraw the motion if that, if that's appropriate to be able to do procedurally. And I'll, I'll move instead that we not do anything with respect to the, the recommendation that was made to us tonight and that we schedule for the first regular meeting of the new council once it's been put in place. A question of what to do in terms of creating an ad hoc or direct somebody on staff to deal with this or what have you.
I'll second that.
So it's a substitute motion to direct staff to bring back an item considering the, considering options to, to deal with this property in a form of an ad hoc or defer the, or to, to add the item to the work plan for the Parks and Rec Commission or other options for the council. And that's to come back, he said, the second meeting of the, of the new city council?
First meeting.
The first meeting, the first meeting after it's organized.
Yeah.
So first meeting in January?
Yep.
Okay.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Can we call the roll?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that takes us to item six D, which is Advocates for Malibu Public Schools Fee Waiver.
Hi, yes, Mayor, I have a report, a quick report for that agenda item. The item before you is a request from Advocates for Malibu Public Schools or AMPS to waive facility use fees and staffing costs for celebration, celebration, recognizing outgoing Santa Monica, Malibu Unified School District Board Member Craig Foster, who served for eight years. AMPS is a community nonprofit organization and requested a one hundred percent fee waiver in the amount of seven hundred dollars and fifty cents. The event took place on October seventeenth and AMPS paid the fees in full. If the council chooses to waive the fees, the city will issue the organization a refund. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Euring?
Mayor?
Public speaker, I'm sorry.
You have just one speaker on this item, Howard Redski, and we do have him present in the meeting now.
Thank you so much for preventing me from making the error I always want to make. Mr. Redski, are you available?
I am. I just wanted to say I was strongly in favor.
Strongly in favor of the, the fee waiver?
Fees.
Okay.
Giving them their money back.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Appreciate a man a few words.
Happy to hear public comments.
Thank you. Who did I almost recognize originally? It was Bruce, I think.
That was, it was Steve you almost recognized originally.
Okay, Steve.
Okay, for seven, seven hundred bucks, let's give them their money back.
Second.
I'll second.
Okay. Your motion is second and a third. Would you please be kind enough to take the roll?
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yep.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item six E. I have a sneaking suspicion that's going to be Kristen again.
You are correct, but this is the last one for me tonight.
Okay.
All right, so the item before you is a request from Malibu High School Athletic Booster Club to waive the facility use and staffing fees for the Ioki property for the annual Christmas, Community Christmas tree lot. This event serves as a fundraiser for Malibu High School Athletic Programs. I want us to let the council know since posting the agenda and report, the Booster Club has notified staff that they are reducing the tree lots' hours and asking the council to waive up to sixteen thousand dollars, which is a reduction of approximately twenty-nine thousand two hundred compared to the original request. This Christmas tree lot will occur from Friday, November twenty-fifth to Saturday, December twenty-fourth. The event setup begins on November seventeenth and includes on, the breakdown includes on December thirty-first. The council has approved a similar fee waiver in twenty-twenty-one for approximately forty thousand dollars. And I believe Melissa Shanahan is here. You have any questions regarding the Booster Club's request? That concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions.
So how much do they want now? What, what are we waiving? How much?
It's approximately, it'll be up to sixteen thousand. It's a little bit shy of that amount, but we just want to put a little.
Okay, do we have a member, or do we have any public speakers who've signed up?
We have two speakers signed up and another one raising their hand, but we'll hear from Howard Redski, followed by Mary Ann Riggins.
Okay, Howard, welcome back.
I'm trying to say less words, but I can't figure that out, so strongly in favor.
Okay.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Riggins.
Hi, Mary Ann.
Hello again. I would also encourage you to support waiving the fees for this. The Booster Club does a lot of great work for the athletes at Malibu High. And this is their major fundraiser of the year. And the amount of fees that the city is asking for would take a major chunk out of the proceeds that they would earn at this event. So as a good community action, please waive these fees. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess that probably takes us to Melissa Shanahan.
Yes, it does. It looks like, followed by Joe Drummond.
Okay.
Hi, everyone. I'm Melissa Shanahan. I'm the president of the Malibu High School Athletic Booster Club. And I, first and foremost, I just want to say thank you so much for all of your past support and for your continued support. I just wanted to give you a little bit of a heads up. The dates are a little bit different than what Kristen had mentioned, probably because this all just kind of happened in the last, less than a week. But we're basically going to set up Monday, November twenty-eighth through Wednesday, November thirtieth. And the lot's only going to be open from December first and to, until December eleventh. So it's going to be a much shorter time period. The hours are also going to be shorter. They're going to be from three to seven during the week and then till potentially eight, only if we're busy on Friday and Saturday nights. It's just really hard to get volunteers this time of year, as you can imagine. And we didn't want to let the lot go, so this is, we're going to try this and see how it goes. But I just wanted to let you know that it was just going to be a shorter time period, and I think that will probably make your neighbors happy, so just wanted to let you know.
Thank you. Joe?
Speaker, Joe Drummond.
Hi, yes, as a mom of a Malibu High athlete, of course, I support this. I'm just wondering, for eleven days, is it sixty thousand, forty thousand to forty thousand dollars? The fees, that's, or I guess that's staff too, I guess. That's all. Thanks.
Okay.
Mayor, that concludes public comments.
Okay, I see Karen, followed by Bruce, followed by Steve.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, I will move to waive the Malibu High Athletic Booster Club fees. I believe in an amount not to exceed sixteen thousand dollars.
And? We have motion, and was that a second, Bruce?
It was. Although, Karen, shake a friendly amendment, make it, make it an amount not to exceed twenty because you never know what's going to happen. They shouldn't have to come back and ask for more if it turns out they need more.
Okay, that makes sense.
Okay, we have a friendly amendment, twenty, that was accepted. Any other comments? Motion and a second. Will you take the roll, please?
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, that brings us to item seven A. We have a proposed calendar of the city council meetings for the, for twenty-twenty-three. We have a staff report.
I don't have too much of a staff report for you, Mayor. We prepared the twenty-twenty-three calendar of your regular city council meetings and your scheduled budget meetings, but I'm here to answer any questions you have. And before you ask, you don't have any speakers on this item.
And, and if I could simply just also wanted to note that we are proposing in adding in March, which we have not had in previous years, a, a additional workshop to focus on the work plan as a means to kick off our budget discussion and process.
Thank you.
That is on the, the calendar we've got here?
Yes, it is, council member. It is on here for March.
Okay, good.
So Wednesday in March, and it's marked with a footnote indicating it's for the work plan workshop.
Got you, got you. Okay.
All right.
So what do we got to do?
Well?
Just looking for a motion.
Move to approve the calendar.
Second.
Your motion in two seconds, so will you take the roll, please, Kelsey?
Mayor Proton Silverstein?
Yes.
Councilmember Euring?
Yes.
Councilmember Fair?
Yes.
Councilmember Pearson?
Yes, indeed.
Mayor Grisanti?
Yes.
Motion carry.
Okay.
I'd hate to Karen and Mikey get the vote on what we're going to be doing. Never, that's a joke, nevermind.
Actually, I'm going to vote to change the schedule entirely. You all meet Friday night at nine o'clock.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
Every other Sunday.
We, we have to adjourn the meeting now, and we have to adjourn it in the memory of Andrea, Andrea Bullo and his son.
Marco.
Marco. Irene Ryan and Brett Barish. Did I get that correct?
Eileen Ryan.
Eileen Ryan.
And you can do that on your own, Paul. You don't need a motion.
Okay, then.